Council, go ahead and call this meeting to order for the record. It is May 3rd, 2022 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's City Council Work Session with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We have no changes for this afternoon's agenda, so I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring saying by saying I.
I.
Opposed they. The I's have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and quote to attest.
Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring saying by saying I.
I.
Opposed they. The I's have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go right into our department commission reports. First up is item 15, which is civil block presentation by River Catas Development. It looks like we might have John J. Mark here to come forward. I don't know who's going to go and come on forward if you wouldn't mind, whoever's going to be leading this presentation. All right. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
John McGraw, 1038 Trowbridge Road, East Lansing, Michigan.
Mark Sandell, GGLO, 1199 Shoreline Lane, Boise.
Gary Schubert, 4725 Park Street, Shawnee, Kansas.
Well, thank you. The time is yours, gentlemen. So, Mr. City Clerk. Just hit presentation.
And warning on the mouse. It's a skating mouse. You know, it's one of those. It goes, who knows where?
All right. Sorry about the wait. Thanks so much, all of you, for having us. It's been a while since we've been here. We're very excited to be here again. John McGraw, River Catas Development. The last time we spoke, we presented on a preliminary or conceptual plan based off of ideas we had as a group of what we thought that what we thought would be a good idea for Meridian with the limited knowledge that we've had. And over the past few months, we've been able to engage with local stakeholders, with government, with people who live here, and get a better understanding of a project that is not only feasible but complementary to downtown Meridian. And so today, the goal of us is to explain to you what we've done, who we've talked to, the feedback that we've gotten, and then how we've translated that into a site plan, into a conceptual drawing. And then after that, we'd love to hear your feedback. Because our goal as a group is to collaborate, is to take what we hear and translate that into a drawing, and then get more feedback, refine again, and keep doing that until we have a plan that works for everyone. So today, again, John McGraw, we have Mark Sandell, our landscape and place making expert. And then we have Gary Schubert from Opus Design Build, and who's assisting in the design portion of our of our project. So I'm going to actually let the experts talk now, and I'll wait till we have questions and all the hypotheticals, but Mark's going to take over. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. So I think you know us, but as John said, it's been a little while, so just briefly. Well-rounded design team. Opus has design and build, so that smooths things out, given this market. And Gary's representing design today. GGLO, hopefully you know us from working in the Treasure Valley for several years, and we've done enough to be dangerous in Meridian, including being involved in the project across the street from this one. Our main approach is place making and making sure that as cities grow rapidly, as Meridians downtown is, that identity and culture are perpetuated, not diminished through these projects. That's a really important thing. And hopefully, the process that we're going to talk about, that we've gone through on this project demonstrates how we do that. And then we also have the land group, important local civil engineer on this project, given the Hunter lateral and work with ACHD and others. So the project, we all know where it is. We always want to keep in mind this distillation of the goals of the project. And as we get into the details, we always want to pull up and make sure that we're accomplishing this in every way possible. I think this is really important for a catalytic project like this. Also want to remind ourselves where we left off. So this is where we left off when we first came in front of you, without the benefit of all the input that we've had over the last many weeks. Timeline, just always a good thing to remember. So we're now in, hard to believe, spring going into summer of '22. How did that happen? Focused on pre-development, public input, which we'll talk about quite a bit, programming, infrastructure planning, preliminary design, and of course, ultimately approval from you all. Then as we get into fall and winter of this year, we're going to get into design, documentation, permitting, all the good pre-construction services that are so critical right now. The Hunter lateral relocation during the window of season, when we can do that. And then, of course, agency coordination with ACHD and others. And then hopefully, if all goes well, the idea is that in 2023 and 2024, we've got building construction underway, Second Street construction underway, and somewhere in 2024, in there, a grand opening. All right, let's talk about public involvement, because back to what I said before, we really didn't want to make sure that an important project like this, that's going to have a major influence on downtown, is responsive to the needs of the community. And so we did engage a process. What we've completed so far, since we saw you last, is a public workshop in person, an online survey, which we had the results for. That was April 7th, and really focused on identity programming and preliminary layout. And then we met with the Chamber of Commerce, gave them a presentation and update. And then we've been holding stakeholder meetings with adjacent property owners, and we'll continue that into the month of May, where we have another public workshop, more stakeholder meetings, as I mentioned, and ultimately, an open house then in June. I won't go too deeply into this, but as part of the public process and how we start off, we really want to focus on identity and understanding the ethos of Meridian. What we're doing probably will look a little different than what's been done in the past, but we wanted to very intentionally represent the identity of Meridian as a city. And so part of what we did is look at attributes and visibility attributes, and why folks continue to live here and continue to move here, and try to distill those down and then translate those through design. Also, we've been looking at the multi-block radius, a five to 10-minute walk downtown, to understand how this knits into that fabric. And then, obviously, what some of these public amenities that we're excited to work on, Second Street, Public Plazas, how all that works together with existing infrastructure of the city and with new projects coming online, like Union 93 across Broadway. So these were boards from the public process that we brought up to try to hone in on some priorities with that and get some visual preferences. Also, in the in the public involvement process, we were showing some initial programming and some initial planning to help garner some input, including these plans and the notion of Second Street as a festival street that could go one, two, or four blocks. And then we also looked at visual preference for programming a urban open space in the northwest corner of the site that would work as a network with Second Street and with the public plaza across Broadway with Union 93, and then, of course, Second Street itself. So here's the online survey and some of the things we asked, and I've got a summary of this in the end. We can come back to any of this that you want to dive into. So we asked a couple of questions to understand who was responding. So we had about 40 respondents, roughly 39 technically. Most either work or live in Meridian. Less are just visitors. Most have been here for a while, eight-plus years. And then we asked, what makes Meridian a great place to live? What words represent the identity of a town? No surprises here. Family-friendly, safe and healthy, local business, historic, all those things that we typically hear about Meridian. We asked, what program items would you like to see as part of the public open space and as part of the festival street? Urban Plaza, flexibility, shaded seating, festivals and events, street trees, site furnishings, all those good things. And then we asked how far those improvements should extend. Eventually, we assume this is phased. We'll start with the block adjacent to us and could move forward. And there's a lot of interest in support of this festival street. Found that from the chamber, found that from the public survey. So at least two blocks, and in some instances, four blocks was of interest. So if we were to distill that down, what we heard through the survey from an urban plaza program is flexible urban plaza, place to grab, if you're grabbing a sandwich or a coffee, a place to sit. Speaking of that seating, shaded seating, festival lighting, some sort of interactive seating, and then interactive player art element, potentially qualities, family-friendly, local business support, walkable, connected, historic, community-centric, all those things that we're used to hearing. And then we talked about the festival street. So this all plays into what you're going to see translated into design. But that's just one area of input. So that was the survey for public, the public workshop in person. There was a lot of support for the festival street and for ground floor activation. We were asked to consider height, bulk, and scale, particularly on the east side of the project facing the single-family homes, and desire for mitigating that through open space, somehow integrated into the building, and for trees and landscape to soften. We've been working with a working group, which includes folks from a bunch of agencies and from you all. And the input that we got essentially from the working group and from the city was, and from you, previously, expand retail commercial on the ground floor, make sure that we're activating our downtown. Add public urban open space. It can be small, but quality is important. Provide public parking. Shift vehicle access and loading from Third to Broadway, and this is all based on that original plan. And find ways to mitigate height, bulk, and scale again on that east side. So these are things we really keyed onto. So when we get to the preliminary plans, the first thing we did was a shadow study to understand how to limit any impact on those homes to the east side. And what we quickly learned by studying this is if we flipped the building, from what you saw before, basically mirrored it, and had the courtyard facing east, we could step the building down by pretty much 50% facing those homes, which brings it to scale and really limits shadow impact. So from this shadow study, what you can see here is that really the only shadow impacts are in winter, when it's least important, and we're in really good shape in spring, summer, and fall. So we're pretty happy with the impactful results of that. Second thing was looking at open space. We're losing open space. How do we make sure we gain something that's better? And this is an evolution. The existing open space of Centennial Park is about 20,000 square feet, lawn trees, restrooms, other amenities, a little more urban edge or suburban. So we thought, okay, how do we increase that and have it more representative of the downtown and more active? And so we're actually getting over 72,000 square feet in total when you look at conversion of the festival street, addition of this urban open space in the northwest corner, and Union 93 Plaza. And we think this is going to be a pretty dynamic network of open space that, as folks see and get to experience it, is more than just an in-kind replacement, but quite an upgrade. So this is the plan. So you can start to see the building with the courtyard facing Third or facing east. And then you see, reimagine Second Street as a festival street with those open spaces, compass and unbound there. And then there's a pass-through that goes from Broadway to Idaho for getting all that garage access and trash room access, really internally hidden within the project to diminish any disruptions. And then you see there's no access off of Third, per what we heard and what ACHD was asking for. A blow-up of those plans. We can come back to these in more detail. And then this is a section of the festival street, which is intended to function as a street flush, kind of like the bask blocks, curbless, but then can be shut down quite easily for festivals and events. One of the things we're interested in testing is silver cells with larger trees, given some of the feedback we heard, and seeing what other cities are doing. So we'd be curious to hear some input on that. We think this could be a demonstration project. And then here are the renderings. Somebody just show you this one on that open space or that public plaza tucked under the building for shade with special seating and planters and trees. And then I'm going to turn it over to Gary to walk through the building.
So what follows here is, you know, kind of the three-dimensional form of the building, based on the principles and feedback that Mark was just describing from all the workshops. We've really organized the building both horizontally and vertically, in a specific way. We've got a strong base to the building, then a type of middle portion, and then we've capped it off with crown or cap-type elements at the corners of the building. And we've modulated the colors and materials, both vertically, so you'll see some subtle striations of materials, subtle changes in brick color, panel colors as the building goes vertically. We've also created strong corners on the building, a lot of masonry at the main intersections on those hard corners. Here you see it, Broadway and Third. We have a white element that frames the retail storefronts at the base of the building and wraps the corner at Broadway and Third. Pulls that around. The entrance to the apartments would be at the far left, at the bottom of the page, entrance to the apartments. Also, to the right, you can see where we've stepped the building back and flipped that courtyard that Mark was talking about. So to reduce the impact, you know, 50, 55% of the length of that building has been pushed back about 90 feet off the street. We've added landscaping along the street there, both at the street level and up at the deck level, pool deck, to help screen views down to the neighbors. Again, strong masonry corner on the building. This is the entry to the apartments near Second and Broadway. Kind of shows the north-south axis, kind of a service drive to the parking and deliveries that you see there on the left. The apartment entry, and again, the parking garage. We're looking at some screening elements to screen those garage openings with some decorative fin-type elements. Here's the view on Broadway, kind of a head-on elevation view. This really shows kind of the way we're organizing the elements around the building. Again, strong vertical corners, strong horizontal band, and then paying a lot of attention to the streetscape and the scale of the building as it hits the street and the sidewalk. Walking through the floor plans, again, kind of the lower, starting down at the lower right, we've got the retail building. We've got the entrance to the apartments of Broadway, that north-south service spine. Going up to the upper left, we've got the recessed plaza off of a retail space, again, connecting to that festival street, trying to bring that activity and activation from our building to the festival street and back. Parking garage is wrapped up to the northwest, northeast. We've got a second level of parking. And again, a two-story retail spaces. Third level of parking. Fourth level of parking, we've got it wrapped at the east and the south with apartment units. And then once we get up to the fifth floor, that's the pool deck, and again, that courtyard that faces to the east, and kind of roughly a T-shaped floor plan. And a typical floor plan. That's the overview of the building.
And one thing to point out, those important 100 public parking stalls are at the ground level. There's also an expanded trash room off of that alley, or compass and BRT, and we met with them. They were really gracious and collaborative, and we think that we're addressing any of the logistical stuff that would be disrupted otherwise. So we're feeling pretty good about that coordination. So 100 public parking stalls accessed. It's in a garage. It's not the same as the street, but it's pretty easy as far as garages go. So summary, we expanded the retail commercial on the ground floor. We added the urban public open space, the northwest corner, provided those 100 public parking stalls. Shifted the vehicle access and loading from Third to Broadway, got that loading internal to the project, and reduced the height on the east side with courtyard building stepped down, planting and landscape mitigation. All right, next steps, and then we want to hear your feedback. So we have another public workshop coming up, more stakeholder meetings, Chamber of Commerce, we're going to touch base with them again, and we'll be back in front of you all in a week. So there's a lot going on. And then we'll be in front of the MDC Board the next day. And then hopefully, we have a public open house to share out and talk about timing in June. And then, of course, the all-important hearing for land disposition approval for you all sometime in maybe June, probably July of '22. So, back to you.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Thank you. There's a couple of items from the last presentation that I had questions about. But first, I wanted to say, been really looking forward to seeing this on paper, and I'm excited for this to be added to our downtown. So we had discussed in the last hearing about making some of the units affordable and whether you would be keeping everything at market rate, specifically in regard to micro units in the studios. I understand that some of the downtown Boise new construction has had some challenges in leasing their micro units. So I'm wondering if you're anticipating that and what your pricing will be. When you presented originally, I think you had said you were going to start at $1,200, but hadn't identified what units that would apply to. And then we had talked about a number of parking stalls per unit, and I think you had presented that it would be at one per unit. So could you go over those two items for us?
Just to clarify, first question was based off of our presentation, there was discussion on the potential for workforce housing or a affordable component.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Just clarifying the question, sorry.
I didn't get the impression that that's what you were presenting. I got the impression that you were presenting there would be some affordability, not so much workforce housing. I didn't know that there was an intent to specifically make it workforce. But we did have a conversation about the affordability of the units in relation to, in relationship to not only the Treasure Valley area, but similar projects around the country.
Understood. And I guess that's why I'm clarifying. So what we're presenting on today is, while we don't and haven't fully vetted out the unit sizes, we have a range, right, between studios, juniors, and that studio could be a potential micro. But we'll just say studios, juniors, which is kind of an in-between, between the studios and ones, a one and two. That's what we're, two-bedroom. And so that's what we've been assuming today now. You mentioned a couple of things in there about You mentioned a couple of things in there about pricing. And I'd love to give you an answer on that. Uh, we're all kind of sitting back here wondering what's going on. Uh, we're running into, you know, I, I get into the same thing that you're, you're going to hear from everybody, but there's challenges, just widespread challenges between interest rates. The access to materials just in it of itself, timing, all of that. So it's hard to say, are we going to run into issues? The answer is definitely, I just don't know what. I wish I did. So our goal is to put together a really strong team. And then we do the best research that we can. We have very large team, which allows us to have uh more historical data from across the nation. From past projects also gives us access to other relationships that we can access more materials and everything. So that helps us out. This is a market rate project. Mainly because of our economy, we're trying to make the project work. And we believe just as strongly as we presented last time that we can make this project work. So the second question was the second question, I'll just parking. Oh, one per unit. Yes, uh, it is uh fully, I mean, how we've designed this project both from a philosophical standpoint, but also from a metric standpoint, uh conforms with the C Z Z ordinance, which is I believe today, one per, one stall per unit. Is that my saying that correctly?
We need code and we'll be at one to one or better.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I wasn't sure uh if the design for the, for each floor for the residential was set. Or if that was, there's still a possibility that that might move around or the number of units might move around. That's why I had asked about the micro verse and the studio. Is there an any anticipation that the residents will utilize the public parking and that public park parking option might not be as robust with 100 spaces?
Parking, parking management is an issue. If it's surface parked or if it's a structure, if it's a structure especially, if there's a parking, a public parking component, yes, there is a management challenge. So all of our projects, we have to manage that. And part of that will be making sure that residents don't have additional cars that they're just storing or they're not being parked overnight. I, I, we haven't fully set the rules, but we will have someone on staff on site to solve for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, thank you. Um, just wanted to give some feedback. I'm very encouraged by the new design. I think it's um going to be a great fit for Meridian. I understand there are some twists and turns and there will no doubt be more along the way. But I, I do really like the design. I guess I like how thoughtful you were about flipping where the courtyard faces, the shadow study. I can tell you're putting a lot of thought as you're getting the community feedback. And I just wanted to say, I so appreciate that. Because I think that's really important to help this fit. And, and so just wanted to give that feedback so far. I think this is tracking well from my perspective. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
On Mark and Gary, right? Appreciate the presentation and I also want to commend you on the, the public engagement side, I think, kind of hearing from our citizens, working with the chamber, um, helps me get a good sense is kind of what's on our communities hearts and minds. Couple of things that I just, I want to touch on that, that I really appreciate is your focus on the, on the public parking side, the building orientate orientation. And something, Mark, I think that you talked about, which is about helping to create some good identity for downtown Meridian. I appreciate that. A couple of questions though for you, and, and if maybe it's easier if you want to pull up slide 33, because this is where I did have a little bit of a, of a head scratch. Oh, I think you were right there. Yep, right there. So John or Mark, I think in your presentation, you talked a little bit about that we've got 19,638 of square feet of open space right now currently at Centennial Park. And I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but you made it sound like that with this proposed concept that we're gaining 72,400 square feet. I noticed you're, you're taking 26,600 square feet of the, the festival street. Not quite sure I wrap my head around that. That's necessarily open space. But then I also looked and I see this, you know, Union 93 project with 44,000 square feet and that's that's separate from, from this project. And really then we, what we're left with is is 1,800 square feet. And I guess I just want to give you a chance. I know you're certainly not saying that we really are gaining 72,000 square feet from this project. We're, we're really losing a lot, but I guess I wanted to give you a chance to maybe clarify on that before I had a couple of other questions for you.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly not an apples to apples deal, right? So we're trying to activate downtown. We're building out the block. We have the strong presence and all those things. And so certainly we're not replacing 20,000 square feet of lawn and trees and open space with 20,000 square feet of lawn trees and open space. This is a conversion to a nuanced, more urban situation. So, you know, right or wrong, what we're thinking that when you look at that, if we can look at how we work with all these pieces together, and we think, and of course we're biased because I got to design it, but the, the urban open space for Union 93 is not insignificant. And we tried, tried really hard to think about both of these blocks and how we conceived of that. If you combine that with the festival street and what we're doing uh with that little urban plaza and that Vunorf piece that come through collectively, we think that that's a pretty strong active urban programmed open space. It'll be high quality. So it's very different than what's there now. Of course, this development of the site and of, of what's across the street downtown is for each of them that's been what's there now. So by no means are we saying that it's apples and apples. It's a very different thing. And, and obviously the street, when it's shut down for events on weekends and for seasonal uh events, it's going to feel like a big plaza. But of course during the day, nine to five, if it remains open for business hours, it's a street. So yeah, your, your observation is absolutely correct. But we think it's a really nice evolution of a nuanced and integrated multi-block approach to creating a vibrant downtown. But it's, it's, it's a jump mentally, right? From what you have there now.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of falls if I may.
That's my camera.
Mark or whoever, can you pull up maybe, I think it's uh slide number 18. It kind of shows our vicinity and the kind of services that are in or around, I think, within a quarter mile.
Yep, bear with me. I think.
No problem. I'm, I'm having, moving you all over the presentation. I.
That's great. That's the intent.
Right there.
Uh, sorry.
That's okay.
So this one or this one?
That one right there.
Yeah.
Because when, when I saw this slide, I, I was a little concerned because what I noticed there is number four, you have identified as, as public space. And unless I'm incorrect, which is often the case, I think that is, you know, gym space or outdoor field space that's owned by a private school. It's not available to the public. Our citizens can't choose to recreate on that. And so I don't know if that was just a typo or if maybe you know something more that we don't about that being public space available to the public.
I certainly don't know more than you do. So we'll go with what you're saying.
So I guess that kind of brings me back to, to where my concern is. And I guess I would be curious, because you did such a good job of engaging the public. The way that I look at this right now is that our, our downtown residents currently have 20,000 square feet of, of outdoor usable recreation space that allows for volleyball. There's an interactive play structure. We have restrooms there, community theater performs there. It's used. And what I'm seeing now is really 1,800 square feet. And I understand that for your intent, you're classifying the, the festival street as part of that. We may have to agree to disagree on that. I, I struggle though also then with grouping in the, the Union 93 as part of the open space. And I, I guess the crux of all of this, and this is where I'm, I'm a little challenged on this project is I'm going to have a really hard time looking at our downtown residents who enjoy that park space and tell them that they're getting a win out of this. So as one who's engaged the public, help me understand how our downtown residents are going to win by this project.
Yeah, uh, well, there's no doubt that if you're putting a activating building on most of the site with housing and retail that you're, you're replacing a, a open space in your downtown, right? I mean, there's no way around that. That's exactly what's happening. So it's a trade off. Uh, and so I wouldn't want to go to someone and say, um, if you like a more pastoral park-like open space, that this is gonna make you happy. No, it's an active urban building in your downtown. So yeah, it's, it's an evolution into something different for sure. You can't, the site isn't big enough to have both, I guess. Right or wrong, but uh, yeah. So that's where I, I think if I was in your shoes, I would feel confident saying that when you look at the site now and you look at that open space and what you have, and when you look at the, what the sites offer you in the streets, and then you fast forward to what you're getting that as far as vibrant urban downtown that has walkability, livability, access to a mix of urban open spaces, this is, this is pretty darn good when you compare it to some similar examples that are pretty successful, but it's certainly a densification overall, no doubt about it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
That's my camera.
I don't disagree with you on, on the density piece. And I think that if anything creates more opportunities. I recognize I, I kind of asked a hard question and I did quite expect you to give me an answer, but I, I have talked to some residents in downtown and, and I'll just, I'll share with you a comment that I heard over the weekend that has really resonated with me, which is that Meridian downtown residents are losing their park so that apartments with a pool and a hot tub can be built. And I think our downtown residents deserve better than that. I know that you want to do better than that. And so this, please don't have this be a shooting the messenger. It's just that it puts me in a hard spot when I talk to our downtown residents about what they want. And they feel like that maybe they're not getting what they've had, that they're, they're losing in this. And I don't want our downtown residents to lose from this project. I want our downtown residents to win. So just food for thought when you come back to us. That's the mindset I'm going to be doing is looking at it from our downtown residents and trying to understand how they're going to win from this project.
Appreciate that.
Council, any additional questions? That's what I'm hoping.
Mr. Mayor, and it's, it's not a question. It's just uh just appreciate the effort that's gone forth by, by this team. I've been privileged to be part of the meetings that we have every other week, early morning and discussing the project, discussing the challenges and how they're going about things here. And they're, they're doing an excellent job. They've, they've listened to a lot of people. They've made design changes. More details will come. And I asked them, I said, you know, keep it high level because there's, you can't have the whole project here. We don't know all the details yet, and that's still moving forward. But the changes for the entrance and exit for Idaho and Broadway, I think takes pressure off third street, uh, listening to the, to the residents there. Councilman Cavanagh, he's our council consciousness on that park. And I think that's incumbent upon the city a bit to uh be looking for open space downtown and how we find that and how our parks department can help mitigate that to, to some degree, because we are doing something different. It is going to an urban uh setting and we are losing open space. But so what do we do and how do we do that? And what does that look like is, I think, something that, that is our responsibility. So I appreciate the effort that uh River Caddis and their team has put forth. And uh, I think uh, I'm, I know I'm excited about it. And uh, there's going to be more challenges ahead. There's always things, there's issues that come up and we'll, we'll just keep plowing ahead and we'll, we'll get them resolved. So and we'll just keep it moving forward. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Just one more question. I'm curious about the respondents from the last um workshop. And there was about 40, you said, what's been your efforts to bring folks in and, and do you anticipate about the same amount of people in the next workshop? Really like to see more if possible, given the importance of the project.
Yeah, I think um we had this survey, which was 40 respondents. I think the workshop, we probably had probably 20 or so. So we're with you. It's always, uh, you know, we were, we've done a fair amount of this over the last couple of years. We're pretty satisfied that there was enough of a sampling, but we always want more, as you said. So what we did this time is we really noticed it in advance. The first one, we were just starting everything. And so we, we gave the noticement, all the requirements, but this one, we actually sent out a couple of weeks in advance to try to get a bigger catchment area. And then we also think that by meeting with the stakeholders, having the first one meeting with the chamber, that we've got the word out a lot more. So hopefully to your point, we get a bigger response and get to build on what we've heard so far. That'll be important on this one because we showed a lot of the diagram stuff and then incorporated the feedback into what we did. But now we've got real stuff to show for folks to understand. So we think it'll, it'll speed up ability to digest and put input, uh, give input. So if you have any other ideas for getting the word out, let us know. But we think between the chamber, noticing it a little bit more and being a little bit more midstream in the process, we hope to get a bigger turnout. Weather's getting nicer, I think. I can't judge by the last couple of days, but that should help too.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you, your presentation and update and look forward to seeing you work with you on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item 16 uh from our finance department, impact fee study training. Turn this over to Mr. Roy.
Thank you, member, members of the council. And we appreciate the opportunity to present to you the uh impact fee 101 uh presentation. We have our consultant who we engaged with to assist the city of Meridian to facilitate our impact fee study, which we do about every four to five years. The last time we presented to you and the citizens and impact fee studies was in 2018. So this is a timely uh report for us to begin the um impact fees study. We're going to have Dwayne Guthrie, our consultant, uh, jump online here and lead the presentation. Uh, the goal of this presentation is to give you a general understanding of what the impact fees led, I guess, the state statutes represent and what Dwayne will be conducting with the city Meridian over the next four months. And Dwayne will be working with the impact fee advisory committee. I'll be administering the meetings between our consultant, Dwayne, and the impact fee advisory committee individuals. And through the next three to four months, we'll be um working together to develop an impact fee study to present to you and the council or to you and the citizens for acceptance. So at this time, I would like to introduce you to Dwayne Guthrie. He's our consultant. He actually put together our last study in 2018. Some of you might re remember him, but with that, I'll hand it over to Dwayne. I can help be here for any questions. Um, Dwayne, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, council. Um, just want to check, are you hearing me? Okay?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And are you seeing my um screen? It says City Meridian slides?
Yes, we are.
Perfect. Okay. Well, this is what we're going to go over. We're gonna go through a, a, a quick presentation. I don't want to just talk the whole time. I'd like it to be more of a dialogue. So I'm going to go through um some kind of up slides right up front to time, talk about the revenue strategies, financial monetary aspects of what we'll be doing and kind of get your attention that way. Cause most everybody's always interested in those kind of tough decisions. Then we'll go into more of the impact fee 101 background information on the impact fees, just to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page, because a lot of, some of you might be new to the process and it's also, we have new staff and uh new committee members and things like that. So we'll go over those and touch on legal requirements. But hopefully we can get through this uh in about 30 minutes, but we want to have plenty of dialogue. So talk, um, ask questions as we go. So what we're kind of wrestling with is um, just like we all acknowledge that we have onsite costs for building materials and labor and things like that. We also have in um offsite cost to, to provide infrastructure necessary to accommodate new development. So that's a real cost and we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So basically we, we can kind of walk through this decision tree to kind of give you an idea of how we're going to fund growth or pay for the cost of growth. So down, going down the, this axis towards the left side of my diagram. Impact fees are a common solution. You already have them. This is just an update. So you're, the builders and the developers and staff are already familiar with the process. But um, it is um basically something that you can say, we're just gonna, you know, basically try to adopt the maximum supportable fee. And if you go down that path, it's more of the kind of philosophical kind of label that gets put on that is saying growth pays its own way. That's not necessarily the best tech track or the, the appropriate track for the time. And that's what you got, why you guys are tough faced with the decisions on this process. So we can also, you know, think about, well, what are other options? So you can adopt impact fees that are less than the maximum amount. And if you do that, um, there's basically, you know, two options. You can somehow say our levels of service are fine now. We're going to accept what the way they are and we're going to either delay or reduce projects. We're going to accept what the way they are and we're going to either delay or reduce projects. Or perhaps we're going to go with lower cost factors to kind of reduce our costs and cut, make our fees a little less. So there are some options down that path. Or you could say, let's maintain our current levels of service and basically pay for that growth from some other way. So that would be basically saying you're going to subsidize. It's kind of a valuing term, but that's basically saying you're going to accommodate growth by either finding some other revenue source. So we're not doing impact fees for water and sewer. So utility rates aren't really an option. So in your case, we're doing public safety, police and fire and parks. So we're basically looking at general fund types of options if we don't want to adopt the maximum supportable fees. And we want to maintain our existing levels of service. So that would mean you'd have to find, you know, bonds or pay for those out of sales tax or property tax or those kinds of things. So that's kind of the basic decisions. Any questions on those before I move on?
Yeah. Mr. Guthrie, Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, Mr. Guthrie. I didn't want to get you off track. I was hoping maybe Todd could just, or, or you, Mr. Mayor, or whoever put this item on the agenda could just level set us as to the purpose of this on the agenda. Is it to educate council about impact fees? Is it because we feel there's a specific issue coming that we need to be aware of? Help me understand where this is coming from, the purpose of it.
Mr. Roy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, to answer, great question. This is a impact fee one oh one opportunity to inform you, council, citizens, anybody watching. Part of our impact fee study on, when we do this every four years is to phase one, educate our individuals who we're going to be presenting this impact fee study to. So this is our very first step in the process is hey, this is impact fees. This is what it is. This is one oh one. Please let us know. You'll be hearing more and more and more about impact fees over the next four months from myself or the impact fee committee. But this is high level. This is what impact fees are. This is what we do every four years. So informational purposes only, no decision at this time. Just trying to educate and inform anybody who wishes to learn more about impact fees. Thank you.
There will be a decision at some point in time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Totally. So just for some feedback, I mean, I, I love the information and having the educational sessions. I also want our time to be as effective as possible. And I think if we feel that the council has been on council long enough and we get grounded in the background, perhaps these types of things could become an appendix. It's just some feedback, you know, going forward. You know, to just because we have so little time, I, and I just like to be level set personally in the purpose of each agenda item. So that helps me as I'm listening to keep in mind, are we making a decision at the end of this? Is this really because we're doing an impact fee study and this is a heads up? Get your mind into impact fee mode or kind of what the purpose is. Thanks.
So one big picture to clarify, it's about, about a three month process. So over the course of the summer, we'll be doing our work and coming back to you. So you will be hearing from us soon, but it, that's basically just the start of the process and it is required by state law that you do periodic updates. You can't just adopt the fees and then, you know, sit on, on them for 20 years. You have to keep them up to date. So there are, you know, different funding options that we talked about, and there's unfortunately some conflicting or competing interests that we'd like it there to be a nice, strong connection, rational nexus or connection between the people creating the demand for service and those paying the fees. So, you know, think of special assessments, you could get, do a special assessment just to improve. Pave a dirt road to give access, paved access to property owners along that, that area. So, you know, that's a direct connection. Obviously those benefiting are, are paying the amount. Unfortunately, if you think about what happens with our different funding options is that if you look at it from this perspective on the right side of the diagram, that means that you have a very small revenue base trying to pay those costs. So politically what happens, we tend to kind of push things to a broader revenue base to make it easier and has spread the pain out over more folks. So that's, you know, they're kind of like trying to find the right balance here between impact fees, which are, you know, a nice tight connection between new development and the, the amount that they're asking to pay versus realization that basically you've already got 80 or 90% of the folks that are in Meridian are the same people that are going to be here, you know, five or 10 years out. So that, what we add every year to that base is relatively small and those are the folks paying the impact fees. So I'm, I appreciate what you were saying about wanting to maximize your time. So I think I'll speed it up a little bit. So here's the kind of like boilerplate answers for why communities do impact fees, since you already have them, you've wrestled with this already. But it, you know, basically is a way to maintain your level of service for residents and businesses. It helps to minimize the need for broad based revenues, which are hard to come up with. Current residents don't want to subsidize growth and it provides a predictable funding system shared by all the developments. So every, all developers get to kind of put the amounts into their performance, figure out, make sure the numbers work and they're, you know, not being caught by surprise as to what the expected cost is going to be. So here on the bottom right are the way the fees are set up today. So some of the input we'll be asking for. For example, we do fees now by size of unit. So we'll be asking, you know, do we, do we need to fine tune some of these size thresholds? Are consolidated or expand the range? Those are the kind of things that we'll be looking at this time around. And we're always, you know, real realizing that impact fees do add to the cost of housing. In your case, it's probably relatively minor, probably more like one to two percent of the cost of a unit. But in a healthy market, it just one kind of remind everybody, it's not usually or normally the developers that are paying the impact fees. Those are passed on to the end users, the people that either buy the units or rent them or the businesses that move into those properties. So in a healthy market, it's usually not the developers, it's passed through to, to the end users. Any questions on those before we go on?
No questions yet.
Okay. So here's the kind of the fundamentals. I'm going to go through these fast. It's an impact fees fund the gross share of public facilities needed to serve new development. It is a one time fee, it's not ongoing, like a utility user charge would be. It's just one time right up front. Connected to the building permit activity. And it can't be used for any operations, maintenance or replacement costs. So like when it comes to police, you know, 90 something percent of their budget is operating costs and very small part is actual growth related capital. And you'll see that as we go through the, the fee update that the police impact fees of the relatively, the, the smallest of the three that you're currently adopting imposing. Here's the basic methods and what we have to always consider when we do impact fees is also the idea of credits or avoiding any kind of potential double payment. So we can, when we actually do the cost side, we can consider what you've already done in the community that might be oversized. Or you're paying off debt on those kinds of things. We call that a cost recovery component. Most of these will document our current level of service, more of a snapshot kind of approach and that what we call the incremental expansion method. We're saying, here's the increments that, you know, so many acres of parkland or so many square feet of building, those are standards and want to maintain those standards over time. And then we could have a plan based method where we just identify projects and then we allocate the cost to existing and new development and, and do the fees that way. And we can mix and match the methods for any particular type of impact fee. It doesn't have to be all the same methods for every type of infrastructure or even within a type of infrastructure, you could have a cost recovery component and a plan based component. Those are all possibilities. So the math is real simple. It's just basic algebra and what we, our charges kind of document all the numbers. So people could actually take out their calculator and multiply the numbers and, and see exactly how the fees come up with. That's requirement of state law. You have to basically show your work. And so the, the three general steps are figuring out the number of demand units or service units per unit. So in the case of a park fee, that would be persons per house. And then we have level of service standards, things like acres per thousand people, square feet of recreation building for a person, that type of thing. And then we have a cost factor. So those are the things we're going to be asking staff to help us update, especially the cost factors are a big deal now because of inflation. Your, your, your costs have risen dramatically over the last few years. So here's some of the legal requirements. People will say the impact fees are taxed, but legally they're not. It's a fee for service or almost like a contractual kind of a, a concept where the city's taking the money and basically promising to provide the, the capital improvements that are identified in the capital facilities plan. So it is a fee, it's based on your police power and there's three key legal requirements. You have to be able to show that there's a need for the infrastructure. That new development is going to benefit from the fees that they're paying and we have to make sure that the fees are proportionate. So that's one of the reasons, for instance, we're doing the residential fees by house size because you have fewer people per unit and the really small units like a, a studio or a one bedroom unit. And then the larger units, you know, on average have more people. So I'll talk a little bit about the specifics of the Idaho Development Impact Fee Act in just a few minutes. Here's some of the possible types of infrastructure that you can include. The ones that we're doing are parks, police and fire. People have asked about schools. They're not authorized in Idaho at the moment. And one of the other important distinctions in Idaho is you have to have a useful life of 10 years or more. So that's really important for police because their patrol cars turnover or get worn out very quickly. They usually don't meet that useful life requirement of 10 years. And so for police is really doing just impact fees for buildings. Here's the kind of the process that we're going to be going through. We are going to establish an advisory committee. That's a requirement in Idaho. We have to look at, our, our actually document our land use assumptions or we're expecting to happen over the next five to 10 years. Has to be adopted by ordinance and we have to set up and we have implementation requirements like in the reports. And then expenditure timeframe limits. Again, you can't just collect the money and sit on it. You have to spend the dollar, the dollars within a certain amount of time, make sure new development benefits. Here's a couple more requirements in Idaho. You have to have actual costs or reasonable estimates, which is a little hard to do these days with costs changing so quickly, but we will definitely look at those. We have to have the same standards for existing and new development. That's a requirement in Idaho. Not every state requires that. We have to consider service areas. I think you're very relatively small geographic area, compact. So we'll probably just continue to have citywide impact fees. And then we have to have a reasonable, fair formula to show what's, how the fees proportionate. And we also have to have some variation and not only residential and non-residential, but then a breakdown now on the non-residential that says, you know, we have commercial fees and then in your case, it's everything else. So agricultural, industrial office, all those are other categories of our types of, types of land use, excuse me, are lumped together. As far as the process, we'll have several work sessions or meetings with the advisory committee to gain their input along the way. You have to actually adopt the capital improvements plan. And in your case, you call it a capital facilities plan. And then your code and your state law requires an update at least every five years. We're actually a little ahead of schedule here. But I think part of the reason is that your development has been aggressive, are happening quickly, more quickly than we expected and also costs have been going up. So last couple of slides, Idaho Capital Improvements Plan. Like I said, we're documenting our land use assumptions. Updating the demographics is target like service units, people per housing unit, that type of thing. We'll have to, you know, basically go through all these other requirements that are in the state law. And talk about basically come up with a financially feasible funding plan. So we'll identify what impact fees are going to pay for. And then if we have to have other revenues, we'll also be able to make sure we can come up with those things. And then what do we expect from
Mr. Guthrie, one second. Mr. Guthrie, one second. Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. I think you wanted to be interactive. So I have a quick question. If this would include the possible, the possibility of future impact fees for public works and studying those. So I think that might be a question for Director McVeigh. That's expected.
I'll let you take that one.
Mayor, Councilman Schrader, this particular study will only be focusing on parks, fire and police. If there's any future discussions on expanding impact fees in the city of Meridian to other utilities. I, your example for public works, I think that's a different discussion we'll happy to have with you at a different time, but this particular study for this one is parks, fire and police only.
Yeah, I was just asking the question, economies of scale, right? So if we're studying all these other impact fees, if we want to fold those into, it's only because I had a recent conversation about that, but thank you.
Well, back on this slide, the, the bullet points over here on, show the possibilities. So water waste, water, roads and stormwater, those might fall under that public works umbrella. We're doing the ones at the bottom. Just so you know. So basically this is a collaborative process. We're trying to get everyone to agree that we have real costs. We're trying to figure out how to pay for those real costs. So it's a pro- process of identifying and prioritizing improvements. We'll try to, you know, basically give you a heads up on and planned improvements over the next five years. We want to be realistic about our costs and allocating that cost in between new existing development and new development. And then making sure that the fees are tailored to, you know, things that are specific and important to Meridian. So that's all that is where you guys come involved and the advisory committee. And general public will be giving opportunities for everyone to participate along the way. So it's a matter of building consensus, trying to engage everyone, having additional work sessions with you guys. Making sure the management team and department heads and the staff are all working together. Because there is, you know, it is a a part, a process where it's, we don't want it to come across like a zero sun, some game where one department's winning and others losing that type of thing. We also want to monitor the cumulative fees and make sure that because when it comes to time to approve them, usually the elected officials are very concerned about how Meridian compares to your neighbors or other communities that you might want to, you know, compare yourselves to. So we'll be asking you guys to identify specific communities that you'd like to know the fees on and we'll do some comparison tables. So you'll have those. So here's the supporting documentation. This is, you know, my job to basically make sure everything is legally defensible and we go through all the steps that's required by state law. And then basically for the departments, we're asking everybody to basically to provide this type of information about the infrastructure they currently have. We have to measure things, make it quantitative. And then big fact, big process is trying to figure out the current cost per service unit or per infrastructure unit. And then identifying the planned improvements over the next five to 10 years. So that's the main focus from the departments. So that's basically the overview. Be glad to go back to any slides that you want and answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Council, any questions? Here, Mr. Guthrie for Todd. Or anybody else at this time? Councilman Cavanagh.
I wish for either Todd or Mr. Guthrie. Since we've last completed a, an impact fee study, the city has added a couple of assets in the golf course and roller park. We're managing the pool. How does the addition of those that weren't, we paid for impact fees to obviously develop them, we absorb them. How does that impact, impact our impact fees moving forward for parks?
Yeah, we'll, we'll evaluate that this time around. Look at the possibility of adding other cost components. Making sure that, you know, the, figuring out the bigger cost picture of those kinds of things and whether they're enterprise operations or not, like on a golf course, a lot of times all of those are paid for by fees and those type of things. So that's all part of the update process. So we will be going through that and talking to staff and trying to give you guys a, a good recommendation on those new facilities.
Council, anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate the update and we look forward to much more conversation in the coming months.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and try to move on to item 17, which is fires.
I apologize.
Councilman Borton.
Question came up that I forgot. And if you've said it, I forgot that too. What's the, what's the ballpark timeline? Like working backwards, everything goes smooth before the council is the new impact fees based on the new study in the month of blank.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Borton, we are shooting for three to four months. So that would put for in May now. So that puts us September.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
All right. So item 17, fire station number seven and eight, the North Precinct bid. And guaranteed maximum price presentation by. And guaranteed maximum price presentation by ESI. And uh it looks like uh the chief is the one who's going to join us, which is a different name that was on my paper.
I will start.
Quite all right.
Like hopefully you have the numbers there before you, but um after going through the bid packages and doing, you don't have numbers. No, that's okay. Yep. So after going through our uh bid packages and then doing the value engineering, we've, we've come back with a pretty high uh overages, obviously outside of what we'd initially looked at um for the facilities that were approved in FY twenty twenty two. So basically, at at the end of tonight's discussion, we're looking, looking for some direction on on where you would like us to go from here. Uh it's important that we have a direction because these bids uh expire on May nineteenth. So we're we're on a very short timeline. There is some discussion, one thing I will point out as far as the uh North Precinct, you'll notice that our numbers are a slightly higher than uh fires' original budget number. That's because our design fees were actually in this budget and fires were separated out of this at that time, so. Um with that, I will stand for any questions or I can turn it over to ESI.
Council, would you like to hear from ESI with more details?
I probably don't have the answers you want, so.
I don't think your boss likes you very much.
Comes with the job. Uh Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us again, um here to field any questions you may have on the bid results.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I have a few if I can ask him. Um thank you, so let's assume let's just assume that we did move forward, if we were to do that. How does the GMP structured? What's your contingency that's built into that? Is there any chance of a cost overrun? In this inflationary environment, have you built that into your own bid? I just want to make sure because it feels like understandably in this environment, it's been kind of a moving target.
Yeah, excellent question, so obviously we're in an unprecedented time of inflation. Um working with the city um throughout the last couple of weeks, you know, we typically carry a construction contingency in these projects, typically ownership carries a owner contingency as well. Um we've adjusted those contingencies to help protect this project against any possible future escalation uh impacts that occur.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
So to get more specific, so I'd like to know what the owner's contingency and your contingency are. I'd also like to understand what percentage of the costs you expect to buy out at different times? Like what percentage of hard costs do you expect to have bought out within six months? For example, I just want to understand if you're trying to lock those costs in and how you, where you're at with those discussions.
Understood, so I I can speak to the construction contingency side, we're just over three percent of the construction costs for uh contingency. Um as far as procurement of subcontractors and materials, uh the beauty of the bid package process is that we've already written their scope exhibits. So as soon as we are provided a notice proceed, we can then move forward in giving our subcontractors, apparent low subcontractors, a notice to proceed as well to start um getting them signed up as well as releasing them to procure materials um early and then working with them on storage of said materials, getting the project going to avoid any future escalation impacts to them.
Just understand, is that three percent of total cost or three percent of hard costs or?
So of the of the GM, of the GMP value and and we can follow up with a more exact number, it's just over three percent.
Of the total?
Of the ESI GMP line item, uh the twenty million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Got it, okay. Um I'm just reflecting because it, that does feel like a very small number to me that I that I would expect. Um what timeframe do you expect to happen from the time that this contract is executed and your um let's say seventy-five percent of your costs are bought out with your subs? How long will that be?
Uh I'll, as Ben to come up, two weeks, so two weeks.
Okay, that's starting to make more sense to me, so you you feel like you've lined up all of your contractors? You're going to get them, this package is if we move forward, you would get that to them immediately, so you would lock maybe lock those costs in, yeah, that's tough.
Yeah.
Hmm, okay, and then what has a timeframe changed at all in terms of how you'd execute and where we would expect these projects to be delivered?
Um the timeframe has adjusted a little bit, not overall duration, just start dates. Um I believe we were projecting to start this month. Obviously, due to our process recently, we're moving that back out. Um however, we are still protected with the May nineteenth date to, we have a good timeframe here and opportunity to sign those subs up without um having to rebid the project, so we're still in a good cushion area here, but time is getting getting closer to not being able to capitalize on that effort.
What is, one more, sorry. Um what is the payment structure for the city to pay ESI? So how do we hit certain milestones under that contract and pay you guys in a way that protects us because you're giving us a guaranteed maximum price? So presumably you should be taking the risk that the prices will stay within your contingency. You're having those conversations with your subs. How does that payment schedule work with the city and ESI?
So Ben, come on up here if you'd like to answer this.
Yeah, good afternoon, uh I'm Ben Belt with ESI. Uh to answer your question, payment terms are already in the contract that we've executed. The process is generally as work gets completed, we submit a bill on about the end of the month and then 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 the city pays thirty days later, in which case we pay to our subs.
Sorry, and it's just been a while since we've talked about that contract, so just help me understand. So was that contract not fully executed or are we within a timeframe within that cod contract for the cost to be adjusted? Help me understand how contractually we're having this conversation.
Yeah, so the general terms of the contract are already executed and now this would be uh an amendment to the contract that brings in the construction costs and the GMP.
So we didn't have those specified previously? It was a general contract with you're going through the bidding process with your subs, now you're locking in the cost exactly?
That's right.
Okay. That's helpful.
Council, additional questions for ESI? Councilman Borton.
So describe the delta between Station Seven and Eight. Seven hundred thousand dollar difference.
So Station Seven is located on the south site. Um due to the fact that we proceeded with um just a fire station standalone on that site, they're incurring additional costs of having to work on and develop that site. Really, the big difference is the shared cost that you're seeing distributed between Eight and North Precinct. So that's all the utility costs, um the development costs, so we're having to landscape the other half of the site on the south side. Um and then a few other shared costs like the trash enclosure, generators. Generator enclosure.
Necessarily, I apologize.
So so the site developed.
But but that's seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah. That's the way it's shaking out is there's a large portion of that site that has to be developed. Um and and when I say developed, I mean not left as a dirt lot for weeds to grow on. Um and so we're having to landscape that out, put in irrigation um and develop that as well.
So paving utilities, everything that goes along with building it a green field, right?
So the North Precinct cost would have been seven hundred thousand dollars higher. But it's, and it otherwise would be?
Yeah, so it's sharing those costs with the Fire Station Eight. The site development portion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
So none of that, none of the difference is the buildings itself?
No, the buildings themselves are designed the exact same, yeah.
Another question from your comment about value engineering. Can you share with us what the figures were most recently? The dollar figure that was reduced by value engineering and then specifically what was changed in each building to create that savings?
Yep, so for the recent effort um and working through um post-bid efforts, we're able to bring out about two hundred nine thousand dollars worth of VE opportunity. Um and when I say VE, I don't mean scope production. It's purely analyzing what can we do to change alternative products? You know, looking at building systems, what's there, is it needed? Um what's an alternative system to that? Um specifically um metal panel systems, roofing systems. You know, alternative manufacturers for DIP and specialties, wall coverings, um painting manufacturers, really trying to keep the quality of the facility the same, but identify other opportunities to save costs by simply opening the spec up.
So would you, you'd be able to produce, I mean, this is a summary spreadsheet, but like last time you you were here, we saw the full bid package. It had four or five blanks you were waiting for or missing bids.
Correct.
But you could be able to show that with the full complete bids with everybody? And then show the updated one that's two hundred nine thousand dollars less, is that two hundred nine spread amongst all three?
That is correct, yeah, between Fire Station Seven, Eight and the Police Precinct. Um and with that, we're still obviously working through that process with um the trade partners, trying to identify areas that we can incur cost savings without reducing quality or scope.
How much? How much per each of the three? How is that two hundred nine allocated?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I apologize, but we can certainly follow up with that information.
Part of the concern amongst many that cost is is trying to avoid value engineering if it degrades the quality of what ultimately we want, we don't want to cut anything short that's necessary for these projects to be successful and our guys to have.
Agree, yeah, that's, that was our intent going into it. Um and just being open and honest with the project team as we're trying to share the information of those options and uh we're going to continue, like I said, moving forward with trying to find additional areas of opportunities.
Schrader. Councilman Kever.
What, how long ago did you guys find out about these uh cost overages? Talking a couple of days? A week? Yes, when did you know?
So the day of bid for each, we we split the project into two different bids. Um first half of the bid was on May nineteenth, or sorry, not May nineteenth, uh March twenty-first. And second bid was um April nineteenth. Or sorry, eight. Yeah, April nineteenth.
So March twenty-first and April nineteenth.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kever.
Not a question for you, but for somebody, I just, I'm I'm curious as to why we're just now learning about this now, and that's not necessarily a question that you'll be able to answer, but it's one that I'd I'd like to know if I've been hearing for a while rumors about things being costing more than what we thought and I gotta admit, I'm a little frustrated that we're now being presented this with a very short timeline to make a decision. And not anything you guys caused, but I'm hoping someone will be able to give me an answer as to the why it took so long for us to be informed of this.
Part of it was presented, the March information was presented to council. So it's really the stuff that came in on April nineteenth for the police station and the ones that were not, that we did not receive bids for.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The information regarding the cost overages were presented at the very next available opportunity after the bids were open, so there wasn't a lot of time that really transposed between those those two events, um to answer that question. Um maybe just to clarify one other point too. On your question, Councilman Borton, um there are some additional um costs with Station Seven. We have a um development agreement with Brighton for Collector Road, which was um one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. There's some um fiber and phone fees associated with that structure as well, which adds to that seven hundred thousand dollar difference there, just to kind of clarify that. So it adds to that delta between what Station Seven and Station Eight are costing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Sorry, I never, I don't think I recall hearing that. Collector Road contribution of one hundred and thirty-five thousand?
We have a development agreement with Brighton Corporation, there's a road and maybe I'll let, maybe I'll let Stacy clarify.
Those are just estimates at this time because we do not have the numbers from Brighton CDA. That was um building in some cost for that because we do have three percent um of their CM fee that we're responsible for as a city. And we're also responsible for some sidewalk work that will be, see the Recreation Avenue goes right in front of the Fire Station Seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just a comment, um disappointed but not surprised in the sense that, you know, we're in a really inflationary environment. And I think part of the rationale, at least in my mind, is I think there there is some merit to moving forward to get ahead of continued inflation in this environment. Um I think what would make decision-making easier though would be to be really grounded in the numbers and have a little bit more detail on, you know, more a more detailed budget, a breakdown of the contingency of the different cost components. Understanding the piece that I think Joe Borton was asking about. Um I have questions about that too, so I think just like a lot more granular detail, at least from my perspective, would be really helpful. I think it's hard for a presentation like this when we go into it without background materials. Um certainly, we have a short timeframe to make a decision, but I would think that that a more detailed breakdown would be um very helpful.
Council, any additional questions for the team at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That detailed sheet that updates what we saw last time that matches these numbers, is that something that we absolutely have?
We have that available and we can, we can provide you with that, not a problem at all.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Watson, we need any action tonight? Or if if Alex or anybody else knows? I just know that we were trying to keep things as an option for next week and didn't want to go somewhere if we had to go someplace tonight.
I think just they stressed before that uh we we'll need to bring it back next week for uh discussion possibly, but essentially a budget amendment followed by that GMP in order to hit the deadline to keep our bids from expiring or ESI's bids from expiring. Once that happens, uh numbers are off the table, basically.
What we can do, we can bring back more details next week, have a another conversation, feedback um prior to any budget amendment, but the budget amendment will be prepared, I think this is viewed as a maximum price. Um you you may or may not have recalled uh last two weeks, three weeks ago when we we heard from the county and then there you may have seen Station Seven proposed impact fees to help with Station Seven. Despite the process, I I I know that we are continuing to have conversations with the EMS folks over Ada County. Um and there could still, well, these are the high numbers. My hope is that we will see some contributions towards the construction cost, but those are ongoing conversations with them at this point in time that will also need involve the commissioners at the appropriate time. And that is they are looking to deliver services and utilize facilities that they're hopeful that we will build. So I'd like to think that that will bring down some of those costs, but these are what we were considered the maximum numbers for the purposes of next week, regardless of any future value engineering, regardless of any future contributions, that's where we're looking at this point in time, just so we can move the forward project or not. So we'll bring this back again next week with greater detail, we'll show the detail um this uh in advance and have the team. We'll show the detail in advance and have the team back for more of a conversation. Thank you.
Councilman.
Yes, I move that we adjourn our work session.
Have motions, journal in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, guys have it, we adjourn. Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record is 6:08 on May 3rd, 2022. We'll begin this evening's regular city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time, this is Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Mr. Corrector, we have anyone come in under the community invocation this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. The next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Want council and attendees to know that item number six, the Pine Dale subdivision on Pine Avenue, the applicant is requesting a remand to Planning and Zoning Commission. So that when we get to item number six, we typically honor that type of request. So if you're here for that, just so you're aware of that taking place. Also, item number one, the fire station number seven and eight, Martha Police Precinct, was discussed at the work session and we got through that discussion. So we will remove item number one from our agenda. So, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda with the move of item number one.
I have a motion of a second to approve the agenda as amended during discussion. If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, guys have it, and the agenda is adopted as amended. Mr. Corrector, we have anyone send up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will go on to item two on the published agenda, which is for Public Works fiscal year 2022 budget amendment amount of $304,000. And so we go our way.
Thank you. So Mayor, members of the council, thanks for a few minutes of your evening. So we're bringing forward a FY22 potential budget amendment. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background on that. So I know all of you guys know what BioSolids is, but for the audience or people at home, BioSolids are one of the end products of our wastewater plant. And it ends up being a nutrient-rich soil-like material that we dispose of at the landfill. So they use that as ground cover at the landfill. We produce a little over 9,000 wet tons of BioSolids per year, which equates to about six to seven hauls per week up to the landfill. So these are currently hauled via our contract with Republic Services. And this is a pass-through cost. So there's two costs that are associated with our BioSolids haul. The first is the cost to actually take it to the landfill. And that $29 a ton is set by the Ada County landfill. The second is the hauling rate. And this previously was $195 a haul, and that has increased to $415 a haul. So what that is a significant increase and made us pause and run some additional analysis. We had Republic Services get additional quotes and numbers for us to find out is our current hauler, is that the most reasonable haul cost? And they did find out that there is not another local option that would come in close to that. Republic Services even looked at, could they bring in their own equipment and hauler? And they could not do it for haul cheaper than the cost that we're getting through the third-party hauler. So a couple of things that are driving that cost up is the cost of labor, cost of fuel, but most importantly is the trailer that's being used. So since this discussion has started, that trailer has reached its end of life and is no longer usable. The cost of the new trailer, since Meridian is the only customer of this hauler using, that is being used for the BioSolids, they aren't able to spread those costs out to other, other people. So most of that cost goes on to the city. So we said, if we're looking at paying this high of a haul rate, doesn't make sense to look at self-hauling. So a couple of options, we have the self-haul option, which I'll talk about. We can enter into a longer-term contract with Republic Services and this hauler. The longer that they're able to amortize that truck cost out, the lower the haul cost, but it doesn't get it down by a significant amount. Or we can do nothing and keep the status quo and continue to pay the 415 haul rate without entering into any contractual agreements. without entering into any contractual agreement. So the risks there, the cost could go up or down in the future. So the self-haul option, we looked at scoping out a hauling truck and a hauling trailer to do this operation, and it's about three hundred and four thousand dollars in capital cost. Additionally, there would be some FTE labor. So with, we ran an ROI, and it includes the labor costs, the capital equipment costs, it includes fuel, repair costs, and also a assumption of an increase in BioSolids each year. And even with all of those costs, it's about a one-point-two million dollar savings over a fifteen-year period, and the truck pays for itself in about three years. So a couple of logistics, with the current challenge in the market right now, we've been quoted a lead time of about nine to ten months for a truck. So if we were to get your approval today to move forward with this budget amendment, we technically won't spend the money until FY twenty-three, but I can't start the order unless we have your guys' approval. So it would be approval now, but the actual spending would occur in twenty-three. We wouldn't be asking for any labor today either, obviously, because the truck isn't here. But we have an FTE already scheduled in the CFP for FY twenty-three for your guys' consideration, and that's in our collection system group. These guys are already CDL drivers and are accustomed to driving big equipment. So it would make sense for us to bring it into that group. It would take one FTE about fifty percent of their time making these hauls. So our thought was this employee group could haul the BioSolids in the morning, and then that employee would jump on the hydro cleaner in the TV van and help that group keep up with the goals of that program. So with that, I will stand for any questions and ask for your guys' approval of the FY twenty-two budget amendment for the truck and trailer.
Thank you, ROI. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Borton.
Comment, that's exactly how to present a budget. Just saying, options, logistics, recommendation. I agree with the recommendation, but I also love the way you present it. It's succinct, clear. The facts we need to make the decisions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Oh, Councilmember Borton's comments, like when I have my questions and you kind of check them off as you go. There was one that you didn't touch on, and it just it piqued my curiosity. For the only city that's hauling BioSolids, what are the other municipalities doing about that?
So, Councilman Cavanagh, we are the only city that's not self-hauling. So the other cities have already bought their own trucks.
Thanks.
Just ask the you know what the ROI is if we were to enter into the ten-year contract compared to going our own rate? Or our own route?
Go against that rate, it would be just under five years.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment in the amount of three hundred and four thousand dollars for the purchase of a BioSolids hauling truck and trailer for the Public Works Department.
I have a motion of second to approve item number two in the amount of three hundred and four thousand dollars as a summary discussion. If not, correct cultural.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burnt. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and I'm just agree to. With that, we will move on to item number three, which is a public hearing continuing from April nineteen twenty-two for Eagle Road Daycare Facility, CR twenty-two dash zero 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 three. And we will continue the public hearing with staff comments.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor, you guys are speedy tonight. Alrighty, the first application before you is a request for city council review of the commission's decision. This site is on CC, it's located at three zero six zero South Eagle Road, on the east side of South Eagle Road, just north of East Victory Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use community. On March seventeenth, the commission approved a conditional use permit for a daycare center, providing childcare for up to two hundred and sixteen children on this site. As a condition, condition A four F of that approval, the applicant is required to provide a twenty-five-foot-wide buffer along the northern property line adjacent to the residential property to the north. Because there is an existing fifteen-foot-wide access easement along the northern property line benefiting the property owner to the north, only grass is allowed in the northern fifteen feet of the buffer, with trees and shrubs meeting the buffer requirement in the southern ten feet of the buffer. The UDC eleven three B nine C two requires the width of the buffer to be determined by the district in which the property is located, unless such width is otherwise modified by city council at a public hearing with notice to surrounding property owners. A reduction to the buffer width shall not affect building setbacks. All structures shall be setback from the property line, a minimum of the buffer width required in the applicable zoning district, which is twenty-five feet in this case. The proposed site plan should be revised to reflect compliance with the setback requirement as the building currently encroaches a few feet within that setback area. The applicant has submitted a request for city council review of the commission's decision in this matter. The applicant proposes to install a six-foot-tall side obscured, excuse me, side obscuring privacy fence along the northern property line with no landscaping other than grass in the required buffer area. A revised site plan was submitted, shown there on the right, that depicts a driveway stub to the north that is angled toward the west to accommodate a future development plan on the adjacent property to the north, which has not yet been submitted or approved. This site is required to provide a driveway stub to the north, which was depicted on the site plan approved with the conditional use permit in accord with the development agreement, the alignment of which is not the subject of this application before you tonight. There has been no written testimony submitted on this application. Staff will stand for any questions. The applicant is here tonight to present.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Sonya, if I remember correctly, the P and Z spent a big chunk of time talking about parking. But it, it's not necessarily an issue that that's before us today?
No, no. It, just the, just the buffer width to the north. The, the commission already acted on the conditional use permit. The applicant required, or requested council review of the buffer width, which is only allowed by the UDC to be changed by the council.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Sonya, is that access easement being actively used? I looked at an aerial and it looks like it's a dirt road that's being used to access that property. So I'm trying to understand if, if what I saw is actually on this property or the property to the north. And when I read the staff report, I was under the impression that they, the applicant didn't want to do any landscaping. So I assumed they weren't even interested in grassing the property.
To answer your several questions, the, the easement is definitely on this property. It was associated with the residential property to the north. It was for access, I believe it was to a well on the eastern end of their property. So that's why it's there. From what I understand, the adjacent property has either been sold or is in the process to a developer for redevelopment. So and then your, your, your last question about the landscaping, the CUP required them to do grass within that area, within the easement area. Did I answer all your questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I didn't think two is excessive, but maybe, no, I'm kidding. I do have another question, but I'll ask the applicant.
Councilwoman Borton.
The question, I think, for the applicant in, in five words or less is the condition, the very, very, very narrow issue that's before us is the singular condition. P and Z said X, and you'd rather it say Y. Like in a very succinct, that would be super helpful. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, that's exactly it. That's all that's before you tonight. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Then I'll let the applicant to come forward. Say your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Samantha Kozlowski. I'm a development manager with Eep fourteen Development. We've been working with Sonya on the conditional use permit, and tonight we have this issue before you that we would like to present for your approval. Basically, what you have here is us looking for a reduction in the required twenty-five-foot landscape buffer. As Sonya stated, we would be able to install the six-foot-high privacy fence along the northern property line of our parcel here, and then we would be able to provide full grass within the fifteen-foot of that landscape buffer. So as you know, with the existing cross-access easement, we are not able to do full landscaping within that unless the easement were to be vacated. Just kind of something to add, we have been in communications with the developer to the north. They are in support of this concept plan. And then what we have in plan for the grass area and the privacy fence. Still kind of some continued talks on the drive aisle that's shown there and whether it will be curbed or not. But again, we ask for your support in the reduction for the required landscape offer, and let me know what questions you have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borton.
This is where I got just a little confused. I know it's super narrow, but the, the buffer itself is still twenty-five feet, right? Because the setback is twenty-five.
Correct, yes.
So that's not changing, but the amount of that twenty-five feet that is going to be landscaped, is that the change that you're asking the landscape or green up fifteen of the twenty-five feet?
Exactly. So as you can see here, the area that is shown in gray, that's a sidewalk that leads out to the side of the daycare facility. So we do have a sidewalk in that area, and then everything north of that would be the grass area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
In that fifteen-foot easement that's on the other property, I'm assuming that's some sort of lateral or canal or something that it's an easement of some sort that they can't put any landscaping on, or they might be able to, but that would be up to them if it, if it's allowed.
Correct. And yes, it actually is located on our property, but it would need to be up to their discretion if we would be able to provide any landscaping within that area. So if they were to submit for a landscape vacation easement or something of that matter, we would be able to work with them on that. And they're working with us on a cross-access easement for parking and flow through both sites. So we've been working together and just want to be a good neighbor here and work together to make a good development.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I apologize if I, if I'm not tracking. So you are asking for a reduction from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet? And the ten-foot reduction is because the original concept plan for the building doesn't fit within the site, or help me understand why you need to reduce this by ten feet?
Absolutely. So as you can see on the revised concept plan, the one that was shown most recent, you can see that there is a portion of it that is within that twenty-five-foot setback. The sidewalk on the south side of the building will be reduced so that that building will fall within the twenty-five-foot buffer. So that won't be an issue at all. The only matter here would be the reduction of the landscape buffer from the twenty-five foot to the fifteen foot, like you stated.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
I, I'm not, still not quite sure why you need the reduction in, in, from twenty-five to fifteen. Is it, you just don't want to do twenty-five?
Sorry, we have the, the sidewalk is in the, if you could see like the southern portion of the, the gray area that's shown in the southern portion of the twenty-five feet. It's about five to six feet. That area, we cannot provide the grass because there's the sidewalk right there.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Councilwoman Perrow.
So essentially, the building's too big, and if the building were smaller, then both of those sidewalks would fit within the, the excuse me, within the, the buffer. So that's really, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, was there any conversation about shrinking the size of the building to fit within the code?
We did have that conversation, although this is the tenants' prototypical building, so unfortunately, there's no wiggle room in their prototype. And this is what they would have to provide in order to make the site work and to provide childcare. But with the reduction of the sidewalk on the south, with the reduction of the width of that, we will be able to fit within the twenty-five-foot setback. So the building would be within the required setback yard there.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Mr. Correct, have anybody sent to write testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide testimony on this item? Or is there anybody online who would wish to provide testimony, and if so, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom call? No one is coming forward or raising their hands with the app, like making any final comments?
No, thank you for taking the time to hear our requests this evening. We hope you're in support of the project, and again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
More confused than I thought I would be on this, quite frankly. These questions on the building size kind of makes sense. You got a building. Yeah, I just don't get it. Not catching why the council or why the commission's condition can't be complied with. Why the landscaping doesn't go in. What else picked something up that I missed? I don't, I just don't get it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I have the same question as, as Councilwoman Borton. I, I typically, when we see these reductions, it has something to do with the geography of the property, or there's a limitation because of a use on a neighboring property, but this is just a request because the building size doesn't fit within what our requirement is. And, and my concern is that if we say yes to this request, that, you know, we're going to have many more of these that are just wanting to reduce the width just because their site plan doesn't work for what they had hoped it would, and it isn't necessarily because of an actual limitation created by the property itself.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here, here was my take on it, and it could be different and way off. But where the staff report says because there's an existing fifteen-foot-wide access easement along the northern property line benefiting the property owner to the north. Okay, so they're, they're going to have twenty-five foot, because then there's going to be the ten-foot buffer that they want to have in grass. So that's where I was, my question about that easement was, okay, so something is prohibiting landscaping over there if that's an easement that's of, of that fifteen-foot wide. I don't know what it is, and we didn't get to that. So now you're moving it closer, and then you've got a sidewalk here within that. They just want to go with grass instead of landscaping is my understanding. So there is twenty-five foot total, but it's not, we're not, they can't comply with landscaping or don't desire to comply because they don't have that full width to put, put landscaping on. So you could probably do it within the ten-foot, but it sounds like there's a sidewalk and it's a daycare and how much landscaping. I'm not, I'm not sure, Sonya, if you can shed some light on that or not, but that was my take on it.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you'd like me to respond, Councilman Hoagland, council. Yeah, they're, they're not asking for a reduction in the buffer width, and you can't approve a buffer width reduction. Yeah, they're not asking for a reduction in the buffer width, and you can't approve a buffer width reduction. Well, I should say you can do that, but that doesn't affect the building setback. So their issue is, as you said, is their building's too big. If they bring their building back, and if they didn't have the sidewalk on the north side of their building, they'd comply with, they'd have adequate room to provide landscaping in that southern 10 feet. The condition as is requires them to provide all of the buffer landscaping within the southern 10 feet rather than, say, in the middle of that buffer area, which is standard. So they're they're asking for to be not required to do the, any of the shrubs or trees. And, you know, we don't require a sidewalk on the north side of the building. It's something they're proposing. And that's the reason they can't provide the landscaping, at least directly adjacent to the building to the north. They could still provide it on the west side of the building, on the west side of the sidewalk. But and that'd buffer the play area, which which makes some sense. So if you were you know, willing to approve that at a minimum, I would suggest that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holman.
Sonia, is that a standard three-foot sidewalk? Is that a larger sidewalk? Is it four foot? Do we know?
It's four or five feet. I'm not positive. The applicant could probably answer that for you for sure. It's not dimensioned on the plan.
So that encroaches into the 10-foot into the the buffer requirement space. So, you know, to plant a tree in a in a five-foot area against a building where there's a sidewalk, you're going to have some issues, I think.
Well, the the, if I may, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, the the building does need to shift down a couple, two or three feet. It is shown within that buffer area, and that is a setback area. And I have discussed that with the applicant. They are able to shift that down. As you, as you can see, the sidewalk on the south side of the building is a little wider, just directly south. So they have room to shift that and comply with ordinance that way. And there is a possibility that they will get that easement relinquished along the northern boundary, but it's not something we can act on today because it's not done, and we can't require that adjacent property owner to relinquish that with this application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Anya, would that requirement to ship the building down be required condition in a motion tonight, or will that just have to happen because it's in the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, yeah, that's just an ordinance requirement, and that does not need to be part of the motion. They are already conditioned to comply with that section of code.
Got it. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just to share some thoughts, I feel like having the addition of sidewalk as opposed to grass is fine. I don't view that as a hugely material issue. I feel like the buffer overall is the same. I think it meets the spirit of what we're trying to do. And definitely childcare is desperately needed in Meridian. I don't want us to like lose sight, you know, forest for the trees. It doesn't feel like a huge exception to me unless I'm missing something. It just feels like we're exchanging some landscaping and a little bit of grass for sidewalk in light of the small dimensions here next to the fence. I doesn't seem like a huge issue to me overall.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify?
Yes, you may.
The issue is, is that the the buffers to residential uses are required to be landscaped with a mix of trees and conifers, basically, that are spaced pretty close. It allows trees to touch at maturity maturity. And the the reason for that is to provide a visual and a sound buffer between adjacent uses, commercial uses adjacent to residential specifically. So by just providing grass, they aren't, they aren't getting any of that. They are providing a fence, a six-foot tall fence. Code does speak to that. When they are providing a fence, it does speak to reducing the the tree requirements in that buffer. When if, when a solid fence is proposed. And and our typical perimeter landscaping is is one tree per 35 linear feet. So that that could be reduced down to that. But either way, with what they're proposing with the sidewalk on the north side of the building, it it doesn't allow adequate room for landscaping within that southern 10 feet of the buffer as currently required in the CUP condition.
So Sonia, can you follow up on the comment you made to, are we trying to create the buffer to the north? Because there's existing residential compared to what it will become?
It's the existing use, Mr. Mayor, that it goes off of. And it is residential. That use has not changed. It may be abandoned. I'm not really sure, but we don't have any permits through the city saying otherwise that it has changed.
The RUT area is planned to be residential?
It's designated mixed use.
And the buffer still would apply between commercial to mixed use in the future?
It it doesn't speak to the future use. It speaks to the existing use.
Because that's, that would be my we, I mean, it's not been a secret to me. I've been told BlackRock is going in, right? To this area to the north is going to be commercial is what the intention is now. So I guess that that would be part of the, I don't seems odd to require something that's going to be residential if we don't think it's going to develop as residential in the future.
Well, the the primary plan that is that we've actually had a pre-application meeting on for that property is multifamily residential.
Okay.
Or vertically integrated with mostly residential. So either way, I think it's it's probably going to be residential. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borton.
Council, those are the questions to discuss from staff. I'm going to make a motion that would close the public hearing on CR 2022 0003.
Second.
Motion second, close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Yes, have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holman. Councilwoman Borton.
Thank you for that compliment. Best part of my day. I'm not supportive of the request. Just some brief context. I I kind of get it, but I want to support our code and planning and zoning. There were some some choices made that I don't want to invite requests of sort of self-inflicted attempts to modify code. Maybe this one's not the biggest deal, but I think as a matter of principle, it makes sense to to stay true to our code. It has purpose behind it. Staffs described that well tonight. P and Z recognized it. So for this one, I'm not supportive of the request. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borton.
I'll get a motion out and see what happens. I'm going to move that we deny CR 2022 0003 for the reasons stated.
Second.
I have a motion. A second. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Camer. I want to call you Hoagland, too. I'm sorry.
I'll take it. That's a good compliment all to the ground. I just want to make sure that we're correct in this because the denial is upholding Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. The recommendation of denial upholds the, okay.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Not discussion. I just am thinking that this is something that that could have been figured out really early in the process before the, you know, the lessee was secured and the building building size was determined, that code hasn't changed. So I can, I think that's kind of for me where where I'm in agreement with with Councilman Borton is just, I don't, I'm trying to figure out how this could have been. Like, is this a situation that could have been just prevented with more due diligence or not? And so I think it possibly could have.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Kind of struggling a little bit. I tend to agree with the principle of sticking to our guns on on what we require. It's tough, though, right? It's prototype. This is really needed in Meridian. But I have to think, at the end of the day, this is a matter of feet that the prototype could be altered. So I think I'm in agreement. I would hope that the applicant could make some changes here to come into compliance.
With that, that's quick color.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is not agreed to. But the motion was agreed to, but the request is denied. Next item up is item four, public hearing for lavender heights development agreement modification H 2022 dash 0017. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. First project is for lavender heights development agreement modification. That is, why did I not change the pictures? I apologize. That is not the correct picture at all. The site consists of approximately 3.78 acres of land currently zone R40, located 2160 East Lake Hazel. It's directly north of Discovery Park. It was annexed and zoned as part of the lavender height subdivision in 2020, early 2020. It was my first big project at the city, so bear with me if I made any mistakes back then. The future land use map calls this for this area to be medium-high density residential, which is eight to 12 units per acre. Your request tonight is to amend the existing DA of the lavender heights subdivision for the purpose of updating the concept plan, updating this concept plan. And any relevant provisions associated with the development of phase four of this subdivision. As noted in 2020, the property did receive annexation and subdivision approval to develop the residential subdivision in four phases known as lavender heights. First three phases depicted detached single family, and the fourth phase depicted a basic concept for the multifamily project. Again, the modifications just for phase four, the first three phases have received final plat approval, and I believe at least phase one is currently under construction. New concept plan depicts a townhome development in a private street drive aisle instead of a traditional garden-style apartment complex, which was vaguely shown on the original concept plan. Further, the submitted concept plan contemplates 30 units instead of the anticipated minimum of 36 units outlined in DA provision 5.1E. For the overall development, a loss of six units does not affect its overall density in any measurable way. This area of the plat was intended to be the densest area of the development as it is along Lake Hazel, which is a mobility corridor, and because it is across from Discovery Park. If the development is a multifamily project or a townhome, meaning platted as townhomes, which is three or more in one building, a future CUP is required within the R40 zoning district. If the units are to be sold off individually or in groups, they will also require a plat. So minimally, a CUP will be required for what is shown. So this is not the final approval that the city can or will grant. In summary, staff does support either option. As they would contribute to the housing diversity offered within the development and the surrounding area. Based on the process outlined, staff will ensure the future multifamily or townhome development complies with the most current UDC standards in effect at the time. Really brass tacks, the DA mod before you is, do you like the old concept plan and multifamily better than the proposed concept plan of the townhomes? And do you want a reduction of six units or not in the overall? That's what we're here for. These are a copy of the my proposed DA provisions outlined in my staff report. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe, for breaking it down pretty quick and easy there at the end. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Joe, just to be clear, whether it is both a family or townhomes, they still are going to need to go to planning and zoning to get a CUP. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, that is correct. Why a townhome project needs a CUP in R40? I don't know, but it does.
Okay, as we'll see in another hearing this evening. If they don't, it could possibly affect the amenities that are provided for the overall development. So I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be reviewed by planning and zoning.
It absolutely will be. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions for staff? All right, then we'll, is the applicant here to come forward? If you say your name and address to the record, be recognized for 15 minutes.
John Brecken, Breckenland Design, 6661 Glenwood Street. And they've prepared a short presentation. You may remember when lavender came through a couple of years ago. Thank you. Here's the the location just for reference. And this is a rendering of the of the overall project. See the property there that we're referring to tonight is is that frontage piece along Lake Hazel. It's across from the park. And here are the two shots of what was agreed, and it is currently in the development agreement on the left with the multifamily concept and the concept that we're proposing tonight for the modification. It shows the 30 units on the right. And I would also like to just thank Joe for working with us on this because we we went back and forth quite a bit to come up with this plan. One of the, one of the items that was of question at one point was whether this would, these would be rental properties or to be sold and bought. And and just for clarity, I just wanted to reiterate that the intent is that these would be sold and bought. This is a rendering of the the front facade. And actually, I'm back up here. One thing, the way these are designed is that I want to describe what's what we're showing depicting on the plan. But you have the far lateral here on the, along the north side of the property with the 10-foot wide regional pathway that actually goes through most of the property. But it goes, it just parallels the far lateral. And the way these are designed is that the front door faces the open space on the far lateral, and same with these units on the south and along Bloomering. So the front doors are are facing the street. And as well as on the south units, the front doors face the street. So this is is kind of a modified alley load type of a product with a private street that enters in. And then the garages would be on this, on this, right along the street. And so this is a, this is the the front of the homes that would be facing the open space. And this is the the rear facade with the the garages facing the drives. So one thing, too, I'd just like to point out, I think Joe spoke to it earlier, you know, currently in in the zone zoning code. This is a zone to be eight to 12 dwelling units per acre. And one of the challenges with this site is that it is a triangle shape, trying to get things to fit in here. But if you do the math on this, if it it actually calculates out to eight units per acre. And that's if you include the far lateral, which is part of the property. And if you calculate it without the ditch encumbrance, then we're at 12 units per acre. Just for reference. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one pro.
First, let me say thank you for considering putting townhomes in this area. We have a lot of need for townhomes in Meridian overall. And I also appreciate green space as well. Couple of questions for you. First is, what is the width of the private lane? And what is the, what are the size of the driveways? So it looks to me like maybe the driveways are only five or six feet deep. And we've seen in these developments before when we have a narrow private lane and very small driveways that we have issues with people backing out, car movement, trash cans being out in the road, et cetera. And just to give you a heads up, our planning and zoning commission loves to talk about parking. So thank you for the extra guest parking that you have put in here.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perro, yes, this, that was, that's actually one of the items that we worked with Joe on quite a bit, very extensively, actually, to try to fit all this in here, meet parking requirements and so forth. We feel that it's been very well thought out. And while it is extremely efficient in its design, that it will meet all the requirements and allow for adequate circulation and parking needs. We, we even talked to Mr. Bornjonio for fire access, make sure we were in compliance there. Additionally, one of our work sessions, we made some modifications and shifted the units around to allow for alignment of the sewer main that comes. I can point it out on the plan here. This pathway connection is actually wide enough to allow for right through the path where the pathway connects through. That's wide enough to allow for the hard easement and necessary vehicle access to service and maintain the sewer main, which connects and and services all these units. And then is from there, it distributes down the private lane. And anyway, so then to to address your question regarding access, yes, there the, as as far as the lot layout it goes. There's not a traditional driveway in front of each of the units. There's five feet, it'd be a five foot apron. There is the drive aisle, if you will, is twenty four feet wide. We do have the necessary thirty foot utility easement. And so door to door there, we're at we're at thirty feet. The the parking. Each of these units has has two stall or dual garage, two car garage. And then we've also have parking. We have a guest parking. That's adjacent. That's that parking that's shown on the south side there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogun.
Wanted to make sure I understood that. So there's a five foot width from the front, front of their garage that's part of their property on each side. And then the the drive aisle itself is twenty four feet.
Mr. Mayor.
Joe.
If I can answer those, yeah, that the setback for alley load is five feet, which is why they have the five foot driveway apron thing. And then you got the minimum width of a private street is twenty four feet. So twenty four plus ten is thirty four feet from garage door to garage door.
Thank you, Joe.
At least on the main driveway.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone sign up on the item?
Mr. Mayor, two people signed up, neither marked they wanted to testify.
You want to read out their names? We'll see if they want to come up.
Todd McDermott and Mindy McDermott.
Could come on forward to the microphone and say your aiming address for the record and be recognized for three minutes. If there's anybody online that'd like to write testimony, please use the raise your hand feature so we know to bring you in.
Todd McDermott, one four two one West Whitehall Drive. I'm not sure the official way to address everyone, but.
Don't worry about it.
We just support the change. We're buying buying this development directly behind. So look at our backyard, we'll see their front doors. Built the way it was described. What was shown tonight seems to fit into the area. Aesthetically, I think a little bit more, maybe that's self serving, but does sound through the loss of six units. Change.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
Just a comment, and just Mr. McDermott, don't worry about your testimony. It would not be the first time a neighbor would be talking about something, a development coming in and being self serving about it. So we're very used to that.
Is there anybody else who'd like to write testimony on this item? Would the applicant like to make any final comments? Okay, they have waved for counsel. Your deliberation.
Mr. Mayor.
Or motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion second, close the public hearing. Now, if everybody's satisfied by saying aye. Post day, guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burnt.
I move that we approve item number four, which is H dash two zero two two dash zero zero one seven.
Second.
A motion in the second to approve H twenty twenty two dash zero zero one seven. Is there a discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Strater.
Hi.
Burnt.
Hi.
Burrow.
Hi.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Hi.
Ogun.
Hi.
All eyes motion carrying. The item is great, too. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item five, public hearing for Oaks North Rezone H twenty twenty two dash zero zero one zero. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The maps are right on this one, so we're good. The site consists of thirty seven point five acres of land zoned R four and R eight, generally located northwest of fifty one fifty one Rustic Way, which would be their main open space lot. It's the closest main address I could find. It is shown as medium density residential on the future land use map. The area outlined here does not match the area of being rezoned. This is just the existing property because the final plots have not been recorded, so it has not been subdivided enough for the GIS to catch up. So I just want to make that clear. Because the request for the reason tonight is only for just over twelve acres of land. It's a request to go from R four to the R eight for the purpose of including five additional building lots that were lost over the course of the previous eleven final plat phases. Staff has confirmed the addition of five lots within this phase will keep the project consistent with the approved preliminary plat from twenty fourteen. Again, just for five lots within twelve acres, there was some public testimony as well as written testimony regarding that at the planning and zoning commission hearing that seemed to insinuate that the whole project is being rezoned from R four to R eight, and that is, I just want to make that very clear. That is not what is before us tonight. Because of the request, there is no need for a new preliminary plat to be submitted. City code allows for later phases of a project to include lots lost within previous phases, so long as the total number of lots throughout the whole plat is not increased. However, adding these additional lots within the existing R four is not possible to meet the minimum dimensional standards for the R four lots. Therefore, the applicant has requested the rezone to the R eight zoning district. The applicant is not proposing to change any of the previously proved road networks or connections. The proposed local streets and sub streets along the north boundary are shown in the same locations as before and do align with Prescott Ridge to the north. The applicant is proposing to increase the open space in this phase of development compared to the existing approvals within the R four zoning district to meet the latest open space requirements for the R eight zoning district of a minimum of fifteen percent qualified open space. According to the revised concept plan, a narrative the applicant is showing approximately one hundred and eighty thousand square feet of qualified common open space for what would be phase twelve, which is the total colored area, by the way, not just the twelve acres. Which is approximately fifteen percent. It complies with the minimum open space now. To be clear, the applicant did not have to do that technically to meet current code because they're just doing the rezon here. There's been no public testimony or no written testimony submitted since the commission hearing, but prior to that, there were four pieces of testimony submitted. Again, there was some discussion about the rezon area. There's a lot of, a lot of discussion regarding the overall amenities, which, as I discussed at P and Z, not part of this application is not something that we have purview to require with a rezon unless there is a DA mod attached, which we did not require because they're going to just comply with the existing DA to recoup five lots. There are also questions and concerns regarding the HOA, which the city just doesn't have any purview over altogether. Those were the discussion points during the commission hearing as well. And so I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Strater.
I'm kind of curious if if it is allowable to add these additional units. If that is consistent with our practice and is, and when that comes into conflict with the zoning, is there any legal issue with just saying, no, we want to stick with the zoning that's here?
So, Mr. Member, is the council. It is a discretion on the council's part on a rezon. So you do have the ability to deny a request to rezon it. That isn't a a legal issue to me. I missed the first part of your question, though. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, no, that was perfect. I was trying to understand, like, for example, annexations, we understand we have a lot of discretion. I just want to understand legally if we had a lot of discretion here to just stick with the zoning. Especially if there is a past practice of allowing these additional units between different phases of a project.
Yeah, so Mr. Member is the council, Councilman Strater. I mean, certainly if there's reasons beyond not in our best interest, I think we do need to make sure the applicant understands why. They can, but it is still within your discretion to deny it. But we do have to at least make clear what the reasons are.
Got it. Thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one pro.
Along those same lines, since the entire project is approved for six hundred and fifty three lots, if they don't meet that number, then what does that mean for the project as a whole? I mean, it it is there any issue with that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Counsel, one pro. If they didn't meet that, if they just submitted it with R four and their minus five lots, once it's recorded, it just is those, they lose the five lots.
Okay.
Everything's done.
And I would turn maybe to Councilman Important, or I don't recall this issue coming up traditionally. I'm not familiar over the years, no, of adding lots back in at a later point in a plat. I return to those that have been up here in other ways for extended period of time. I'm not familiar with this as a general ask.
Mr. Mayor.
Back to Councilman Strater's question a little bit. Yes, Joe.
The, it happens all the time on our end with final plots. But final plots don't really come before you, so it is a normal practice. The difference is that adding those five lots, they won't meet their required street frontage requirements for the R four. It's not necessarily the lot size because they're not maxing out the lot sizes or anything. It's just really the street frontage dimensional standard that they won't be able to meet with R four versus R eight. That that's what it comes down to.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Is the applicant here? Like to, I knew they were, but I didn't know which one, so. They can say your name and address for the record and be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff Bauer, six oh one West Bannock and Boise here tonight on behalf of the applicant Toll Brothers. With me from Toll Brothers, Ryan Hammonds, he's our senior VP of Planning, and Adam Capell, Vice President of Land Development. Both are available to answer any questions the council might have about ongoing development at Oaks North. So Toll Brothers is the owner and developer of the Oaks North project. Toll Brothers, as you're well aware, a Fortune five hundred development company with their Idaho headquarters here in Meridian. They employ a hundred and eighty Idahoans in the city of Meridian, and they've been developing homes in Meridian since two thousand and sixteen. We are here tonight on a single application. It's to rezon approximately twelve acres from R four to R eight. And and before I give my spiel, I will say we agree with planning staff's analysis on the rezon as well as all of the conditions of approval that have been proposed in their recommendation of approval. So the property at issue here is in the northwest corner of the project near McDermott. And as summarized, the request tonight for this rezon is to get to the number of lots originally approved in twenty fourteen, six hundred and fifty three, and to increase open space in our final phase. And to provide better transition to the recently approved projects to our north, and I'll go through each of those in detail. For, I I think background and context is important here. This is a project that was improved almost a decade ago. There've been, I think, twenty four phases between Oaks North and Oak South. We're here talking about Oaks North today, so I just want to run through a little bit of history. On the screen is the approved preliminary plat. Six hundred and fifty three single family units approved, three large lots. My cursor, multifamily lot here and two multifamily lots up here. So conceptually approved for two hundred and sixty six multifamily units in addition to the six hundred and fifty three single family units. Over time, this concept plan for the multifamily has has been red designated to single family. I was here, I think, in Christmas for Oakmore, which is the area up here in the northeast. So we converted that sixty units of multifamily to eighteen single family units with a rezon. And then in twenty nineteen, my colleague Becky McKay was here for Oak Winds. And that took the conceptually planned multifamily out of this area and and put in a hundred and ninety eight units of of single family residential. Ninety four townhomes, ninety two single family homes. So all that's to say is that over the course of this project, by and large, the the single family residential that was approved has developed generally in accordance with what you see here, meeting all the requirements to be final plated. And the multifamily areas have been reduced in density to add single family homes. Okay, since, since two thousand and thirteen, on the single family front, which we're here talking about, eleven final plots have been approved, totaling five hundred and seventy lots. We are here for the final phase, phase twelve. It's highlighted in red on this map. The small green area is the is the only rezon area. And as Joe mentioned, we're here specifically to add five lots to this phase twelve area. This is the concept, concept plan we've submitted to be approved in conjunction with this rezon. It's eighty three lots on twenty three point five acres. This gets a little busy, but I thought it was important to show the council, this is an overlay of the preliminary plat with our concept plan. The areas in kind of the blue green color are the underlying preliminary plat. And the area and the lines and numbers in white are the concept plan. And so as, as again, as Joe mentioned, not making any material changes to the block faces or the road layout. Really, we're just adding some additional lots through smaller lot sizes. If we were going to stick with the R four zoning, we'd have seventy eight units with a density of three point three one. With the five additional lots, we get up to eighty three with only a two tenths increase in density to three point five four. And again, no increase in density overall. We're hitting that six fifty three from twenty fourteen right on the head, so no increase in density overall. Why the rezon? Of course, first and foremost, we want to get our five lots that we've lost, and and those were lost primarily to create more open space in the earlier phases as well as to address some some peculiar engineering issues, some corners. But with the, with the smaller lots in the R eight, we are able to add more open space. So we go from one point seven acres shown on the preliminary plat to around three point two as proposed in the concept plan. I I don't think I need to go over this too much because the staff report did it so well, but the the rezon. I, I don't think I need to go over this too much because the staff report did it so well, but the, the rezon we're asking for makes sense here. The, the land's designated appropriately for R8 at medium density residential. Most of phase, I shouldn't say most, a portion of phase 12 is already zoned R8 to the east out towards McDermott and Prescott Ridge to the north is also zoned, zoned R8. So we have contiguity with other R8 zones. Again, as Joe mentioned, here's a, an overall plat showing Prescott Ridge to the north and the area we're plating in green here. The rezon will help us to transition up to Prescott Ridge, which is zoned R8 with lot sizes very similar to what we're proposing with our concept plan. There, there has been discussion in the public comments written before the P and Z and at P and Z about site amenities. So we wanted to go over all the amenities that are included in Oaks North as well as what's still planned to be built out. So in 2014, when the Oaks project was annexed and zoned, the development agreement required 12 amenities. The development agreement also specifically provided that those main site amenities would be constructed in the first phase. So with Oaks North, Toll Brothers did comply with the development agreement. They constructed this main amenity, Central Park area in phase one. The main amenity includes a 4,900 square foot pool, pool house, picnic shelter, a basketball court, two pickleball courts, a tot lot, a pond with a dock, as well as a, a pathway with exercise equipment. So seven amenities in that Central Park area. Another close-up of the pool. This is the Oaks North pool, again, just under 5,000 square feet. Very large for homeowners association pools in the city of Meridian towards the top end, if not the largest that we're aware of. Because of the, the time that's transpired and the number of phases, we prepared this exhibit for the council. It's sort of a cumulative list of all the amenities to date. We've installed eight. Most of those being in the Central Park area. And we have seven more to go throughout the project for a total of 15 amenities. So in excess of what was originally required.
Councilmember Camera.
Jeff, I don't mean to interrupt you. Can you just tell me, orientate where the application that's before us, where it sits on this map?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, can you see my cursor now? You can? Okay. Phase 12 would be this upper corner right here. And so it includes this open space area. So circles numbered 10 and 11, which are a public picnic table area and what I was, you're stealing some of my thunder, a splash pad. So we, we did after the P and Z hearing, we heard comments from our residents who, again, we, we take those very seriously. They mentioned, one, the pool area can be overcrowded during some of those, you know, hot summer days. And they also mentioned that they prefer active amenities versus passive. So they didn't necessarily feel just the open grass area was beneficial. So we have added a site, an active amenity in phase 12. Something like this, a splash pad. We think it meets kind of the spirit of the comments we heard from, from the residents that pool is overcrowded. So here's another hot weather active amenity that folks can use. Appreciate Joe's comments again. So with phase 12, we are increasing the open space to meet your current standards to, to the 15% that's required based on those recent amendments you guys brought through. And with the splash pad and the picnic shelter, phase 12 actually meets your updated code as to amenity. So we'd need five points and we have six points. Splash pad is for the picnic shelters, too. So there were a couple of questions. That's the end of my presentation. I'll stand for more questions, but I'll try to answer Councilmember Schrader's question. We're here for the, for the five lots. We do feel like this is a pretty routine request in terms of shuffling lots around a preliminary plat area. But because of the, the design standards, we did need the rezon. I, I kind of, to get to brass tacks, as I appreciate Joe does, this is a design amendment versus a density amendment. We're just trying to get those smaller lots in.
Council, council questions, Councilmember Schrader.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, just to get into a little bit of a debate about that, you are increasing the density though, right? Do you want to go back to that slide? It looked like you're increasing it. I guess what I'd like you to comment on a little bit, slightly, you're increasing it slightly, but I'd like you to comment on, to me, I get concerned about rezoning a multi-phase project where I think it's in everyone's best interest to anticipate the zoning. And I, it concerns me about managing people's expectations to make a change. I've not heard of these rezones being common practice. That's not what I'm hearing. So if you could reflect on that. And then if you could also just go back to the comparison, maybe actually it's here of the original concept plan versus the new one side by side.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, thank you. To your point, in phase 12, we are increasing the density by two tenths. But overall, on the project, the density for single family remains the same. So 653 units will be constructed. And we've reduced the overall density by taking out the multi-family in the northwest, the northeast corner and the southwest form. So in terms of managing expectations, I believe that this is in totally in spirit with what the expectations for the project were.
Could you please move to the, if you just show the original concept plan and then the new one, one at a time, so we can kind of compare them or a slide that has them both?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, this is the overlay I was showing where the original is in blue-green. Is that the one you're looking for?
No, it's, it's kind of hard for me to see, to be honest, the blue-green. Yeah. So this is the updated one. And then could you show the original?
Madam Mayor, or I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, that's, I'm sorry, that's the best I can do with the slides I have. This is the original preliminary plat.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I believe Joe previously showed a, the original concept plan, if he has that available still.
I'll pull that up. Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor. So Jeff, the multi-family, was that R40 at the time or, or some sort of, so you did have a, a rezon for those particular parcels, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, I believe it was R15 in both areas. But the development agreement at the time specified that the density would between be between eight and 15 units per acre. So we've obviously decreased density significantly in that northeast corner where Oakmore is. And then modestly for Oakwinds, which is just below eight units per acre. I believe it's like 7.8.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schrader.
This looks like what I'm asking for, Joe. Is this what I was asking for?
Councilmember Schrader, I believe it is. This is in the applicant's presentation. Wasn't specific to the plat so much as the open space, but it does show the original versus the new.
You wouldn't mind just letting us linger here for a second so I could look at it? Thank you.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Are the, the open space for the proposed numbers, one, two, three and four? Is that, what's contemplated for that? Is it just grassed up space?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, that, that's correct. So what, what we found, or, or what Toll Brothers tells me is that when we start to increase the density and we're getting those longer rows of houses in one block, those say lots numbered one and two really help to, to make the community feel more open. So you don't just have a continuous row of, of homes. They also help us to meet the city's requirements for drainage as well. On, on lots, numbers three and four, those are just going to be grassed open space. Again, help with some of our drainage requirements, but also provide very nice, you know, street improvement and aesthetic as you're coming down that main, main collector there, main local road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Jeff, I think that oftentimes when our, at least when our citizens, your residents, think about open space, they, they probably view it as usable and not just necessarily drainage. And is there any programming that you plan to do there? Been chis, anything along those lines so that our, our citizens can use it? Or is it just really just grassed up drainage areas? Get muddy? Sorry, we have one in our neighborhood and drives my wife crazy when my kids go and play in and then drag the mud into the house.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, all of our areas are, are, this is all usable open space. You know, we'll have the standard pathways, sidewalks that we see throughout the community. But again, in terms of programming, we're exceeding what was originally required. We're meeting the code today for amenities in this phase.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one whole one.
Yes, I want, want to ask Joe. So this is qualified open space with what they're showing. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, from, I didn't dive into it too much, too much because that wasn't part of what I'm reviewing. But generally, yes, one and two, three and four will all be over 5,000 square feet, which meets our code, especially our current code. And if they are, if they're going to include storm drainage, then they're supposed to be subterranean where it's also grass. It's not supposed to be like the, the banked ones with the rock and all that sand and crap. That's not, that won't count as qualified open space. My understanding is it'll, it will be grassed and just like all the other areas that they have. So I don't see any issues with any of that.
Mr. Mayor.
That's been hold.
Jeff, then area number five or thereabouts in that center part were open space. And that's where the splash pad was going to be with the picnic. Teacher.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, that's correct. The open space map, it, which is what I'm showing in this lower slide here. It was prepared pre-P and Z hearing when we added the splash pad. But yes, that's where the splash pad will be. And, and just to tag on to Mr. Dodson's comments, again, a, a condition of approval that he's recommended is that this phase 12 does meet all of the current open space standards. So we will have to conform to those standards.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
All right. I did want to clarify on the, this is per Mr. Parsons, because he corrected me when I wrote the staff report. My conditions in the rezon staff report actually just comments that we cannot condition a rezon outside of a DA or some other plat or annexation. So they're technically not conditions. And my understanding is council can also not add conditions necessarily unless we say, come back with a DA mod or something like that. So I did want to make that clear. They are comments and my work with the applicant, that they have done what they've supposed, they're supposed to do per the plat requirements. So I, I, I think that they'll continue to do that, especially if the concept plan is part of it. And, you know, I'll immediately be calling that out once they submit the final plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Joe, you had a comment early on and I didn't write it down, but you said the rezon was based because of our requirement for street. I, I didn't write it down. Could you re, can I repeat that?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, it's, so R4 has a minimum street frontage requirement. Street frontage is the term, is 60 feet wide. So the minimum of 60 foot wide lots. R8 is a minimum of 40 feet. So based on their plat, I don't think they're not, none of these, I don't think are going to be at the minimum 40. I think they're all closer to 45, 50. But again, to get those number of lots or even more, then they just aren't going to be able to meet the 60 and also provide everything that they're supposed to. So it, it, it's just a dimensional standard thing. That's why from staff perspective, we're gaining open space overall. And they're going to meet their original approvals. So I don't understand why I, I couldn't say no, you know, as from a staff level perspective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, when, you know, Councilman Schrader said, let's take a moment to look at this. And yeah, it, there wasn't anything obvious that jumped out. You really had to look closely to figure out, oh, there's one here. And let's see, oh, the, yeah, just because it's such a small incremental squeeze on things that it does add up to the five, but it's, there's not a big drastic change to any of this. Makes sense. Thank you.
Council, any questions for the applicant?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, I assume we have some people signed up for this?
Do. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Casey Feasby.
Everyone will get their opportunity to speak. Don't worry.
And Mr. Feasby is the only person that marked they want to testify.
Okay. Then the next person, come on up and say your name and address to the record. We recognize for three minutes and there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony on this item, please use the raise your hand feature so we can prepare you appropriately. And if you can just speak into one of the mics.
Larry Lent, I live at 6054 West Double Rock Lane. And my concern was when I got this in the mail, it didn't look anything whatsoever what you guys are showing me up here on the screen. So that was my confusion, looking at the map you sent me and looking at the map that was presented here. It looks completely different. And that was a concern a lot of my neighbors had when they got these in the mail. So I would hope that next time you send something out to the neighborhood, that it represents what's being shown on your screen versus this here. This didn't tell me anything. It just was this area and it didn't explain anything as far as what was going on. I had a neighborhood plot that was sent to me back in January that had a much better job kind of showing what was going on. And my concern and to know my whole neighborhood concern is this lower area, what they say is going to be the really high density area with homes and condos. That's going to be the main concern. Because none of us were told when we bought homes here that we're going to have this really high density area. So you're going to have a lot of people coming in here and talking about your high density area. I'm going to tell you that right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Go ahead and come on forward, sir.
My name is Ed Kessler. I live at 5298 Mallwork or Myrick away. Trying to spell that. And I have to apologize. I'm 72, little hard of hearing, and I had a hard time understanding the dialogue. But I just wanted to ask a question. And maybe this is one over, but I, I couldn't really understand. Are there going to be any condos, townhomes or apartments built in that area?
Councilmember Board, if you'd like to answer.
No. Not, in, when you say the area, sir?
In that, the, the, the area they're going to be building.
So. Sorry. Just kind of cut into the chase. In, in the area that's part of the application for tonight's hearing?
Right.
That little phase, no.
No, okay. Because that was a rumor going around the neighborhood and everybody up in arms. And I'm, I'm surprised this place isn't over, overwhelmed with, well, the residents here. But okay, thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you. Emails that would like to write testimony on this item, then, Mr. Clark, if we can go to our two people online?
Mr. Mayor, yes. First is Mike. And Mike, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, I just want to comment about the traffic.
Mike, can you say your name and address for the record, please, first?
Mike Lewis, 5343 West McMurtry. So there's a lot of subdivisions coming into the area. And there was one in a previous meeting that you guys already amended and I think allowed R15 on Eustick and Black Cat. And so when you look at the Highway 16 expansion, the traffic already going to Hawaii High School, where do you guys think that all this additions and these developers coming back and asking for higher density? Where do you think that traffic is going to go down? What school are they going to go to? How are they going to get on the freeway? Nothing's being done for the residents on this side that travel Black Cat and Ustick. It's not built for, to continually keep letting these developers change to a higher density. That's, that's all I got for you guys. Just please take that into consideration. The site of town is not built for it and the infrastructure is 2026 or later that they're talking about widening these roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just a quick response, sir. I, I share your concern and thought the same thing. And for this particular application, one of the items that gave me comfort to that concern was, on the whole, this project has lost five residential units in previous phases and the traffic that those five units would create. This application tonight would return those five units and the traffic they create. So the net difference on what was originally approved with regards to traffic would remain essentially the same. Even though it's five units, that was one of the principles that, that seemed to mitigate that concern. I agree with you that it's going to always be on the forefront of what we're looking at. But at least here, we're returning lots that were already previously approved, just putting them in a different phase. So just some context as to how I tried to reconcile your concern that I share. Mr. Mayor.
That's one.
Just, just to follow up, Mike, when, if, because this is just a rezone application as Councilman Borton pointed out, the reasons why and the impact it has is, is, is net zero. If this was a complete request to come in and come meet the comprehensive plan and to build units, we do get reports from the school district on impact to school capacity and those types of things. And we have Ada County Highway District weighing in on impacts as well. It's just because of the nature of this particular application that you don't see that here. But typically they are when a new development is coming in. So it's just because of the nature of this one, that's why it's different.
I appreciate guys' feedback, but you guys just did approve, I think it's Jamestown or something on Ustick and Black Cat to put in those, the high density. So it's not just about the Oaks, they're building a beautiful subdivision, I will give them that. I'm talking in general, these developers come back all the time and they ask for a rezone and you guys give it to them. And, and it's not just about these five, I'm talking in general, you guys need to really look at it. Because yes, this one is just five, but what about that Jamestown R15 now? And the rest of the subdivisions coming in, I'm asking you guys to look at the whole picture, not just five units that they're asking for tonight. Look at everything.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lewis, you can, you can help. It's, this is how, you know, rumors get started. Jamestown was turned down by the city council.
Okay, maybe that in a different one, the one I watched, it was for further discussion and it was going, but anyway.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Council, any additional questions?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, next is Karen Clawwitter. Karen, you can unmute yourself.
Aha, you got me.
Karen, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Clawwitter. 6074 West Double Rock Drive, Larry. Anyway. I never received a notification. And I found out in a roundabout way late this afternoon about this meeting as we were on our way out of town. So I called the city clerk and the city clerk says, oh yes, you were sent a postcard. I said, well, I never received it and I never received the one in January either. So I started calling around my neighbors. And somehow we were under the impression that what was being spoken about tonight was on Trident Way. Do you know where that is? Can somebody hear me?
We, we can.
Do you know where Trident Way is? It goes right into Double Rock?
We, I can't say that I know.
Because there's no, there's no listing on these pictures of street names that we can, that are legible. And that's what you need. You need something that shows that because if you turn off of McMillan into the tract and I think it's on Trident, something Trident, something. And then you go there and you turn left on Trident Way. And if you go all the way to the end, that's Double Rock. Well, on the left-hand side of Trident Way, there are supposed to be five homes in there being built. We, as well as Ed Kessler, was under the impression that we were talking about those five lots. Because everything from McDermott East and McMillan North in that corner, as we understand it, even though we didn't get notification of this, are supposed to be some kind of rental units built in there? And I don't even know exactly what, but what I was told, today's meeting was about these five lots on Trident Way that Toll Brothers was trying to recoup those back and change them all into all rental units. Can somebody set me straight on there as to what's going in there? Because I had no idea you were going to be talking about this phase 12.
Thank you. We can either have staff or the applicant try to reply to that during their comments. Do you want to try to address that?
Absolutely. The, I believe, I don't remember what phase because they're not linear, but nine or 10 or something over here does have five lots right here adjacent to the Oak Winds. Her discussion regarding some notice in January was probably about Oak Winds. If not, that might not even have been then, actually. Just because Oak Winds, that's not what we're here for tonight, just to let you know, ma'am. And my understanding is it is for rent units. But what happens after council, whether they're for sale or for rent, usually not our purview. It's not up to the city to decide that. But the area tonight is only for this area in red shown on the screen. Nothing to do with the five lots adjacent, but an addition of five lots. So again, I think there was some misinformation or misunderstanding presented through the process. The lot line shown for the area in question did encompass a much larger area, as I noted, just because those areas have not been plotted yet. So the GIS system doesn't just get, I don't get to call out just the 12 acres, unfortunately. But it was in association with an addition of five lots total, just for 12 acres of a rezone, though.
Council, any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much. Is there any emails that would like to provide testimony on this item, either in the audience or online? All right, then with the applicant like to come forward and close.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'll be brief. I'll answer a couple of questions right out of the gate. The area the last public commenter was describing, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch her name, is these five lots right here. They are approved as a final plat in phase 10. And again, no, no changes are proposed there. The January notice that she referenced, I suspect was our notification for our neighborhood meeting that we sent out and the gentleman held it up as well. And I'm proud to say he said that one made sense to him. So kudos to us. So I believe that was what was received in January. Overall, didn't hear too many questions from the public, but I did just want to say, appreciated Mr. Borton's comment about density. Are certainly our position is we're not asking for any additional density here just to get to what was originally approved. Five more lots. This is a great opportunity to add five homes that are needed in the community in an area that already has streets, utilities at a very low cost to the city. We're also going to increase the amenity package tonight with the reason. So it's, I think it's a win-win for the city and our residents. And I'd stand for any.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we close the public hearing. As you know, you've seen that we take the public's concerns really seriously and appreciate you making an effort to make some changes to your plans based on planning and zoning's feedback. I did go watch their whole meeting and also after reading public comment, went back and refreshed myself on what happened with Oakwind. And the, the one thing that, that, well, I'm, I'm glad that there will be fewer units through the, the change that was made instead of doing multifamily, doing townhomes and single detached. Is that because you didn't have to go through a CUP process, that takes away a step where the public gets a chance to come in and make comments. And they didn't get an opportunity to talk about the amenities that are going to be in that area because you didn't do multifamily. I think that's where we're seeing all of this get hung up is that, you know, there wasn't an opportunity for them then at that point because of how it goes through the process to get to, you know, have, have, have some say in the amenities. This is a very large development, even for Meridian's. You know, there's other, other developments in our city that are significant in size that do have a greater number of, of amenities or common areas than this does. So I understand why the public's coming and saying, hey, you know, Tuscany's a mile by a mile and it has four parks or Bridge Tower, or this is why the public is coming and saying this because any, any projects that are this large have a minimum of four pools and clubhouses. So just to kind of, I'm sure you already know, know this, but that, that's the one, that's just the one piece of feedback, I would say, as you all are developing these in the future, because you have more to come, that any opportunity for public testimony is really important to us. And I think that's why you're seeing this come up now. They just weren't given that opportunity with Oakwind. So that's all I had to say about that. As far as our decision this evening, this is a really narrow decision. Our purview, we can't condition this. It's, it is what it is. But I understand and do appreciate you making an effort to make some improvements to the amenities.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Council, additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Schrader.
Maybe a question for you and a question for staff. My question would be, are you willing to enter into a DA modification to agree to the new open space requirements and the new amenities? And I guess my question for staff is, how do we ensure that this happens short of a DA modification? Is there an alternative method of ensuring that contractually it happens?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilman Borton, or sorry, wow, Councilman Schrader. Mr. Nary probably commented on the last one more than me. Again, we can't condition the reason, the only avenue to get them to submit a DA mod would be to deny the rezone and state why. And then that would essentially, they could say, okay, no, we're just going to stick with the loss of five lots, period. Or they would come back through with another reason and DA mod. But we, we couldn't require them to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, if I could, it's unique when being a lawyer actually helps you in this process. I appreciate Mr. Dodson's comments. It's always nice as a developer to hear that you can't be conditioned. But I think I disagree in this case. We're here on a rezone discretionary application under Lupa, Idaho Code 676511A. Is a may, you may enter into a development agreement. I frankly don't see any reason why the council with the applicant's consent cannot agree to a condition of approval here.
Mr. Mayor, as the council, I mean, just correct, I mean, you certainly can do that. I think my only concern would be is I, there's not a DA for this piece. So the DA is for the entire project. So now you open up the DA for the whole project, which will then probably cause more concerns for folks that it's changing a lot when you're only changing five lots. And again, it's not changing the overall density, but certainly, you know, if you want to place a condition, I think you can place a condition. You know, if they don't meet that condition, you know, they've got a problem when they're, when they want to get this. Yeah, because this is, yeah, because it's a future final plat. So it's going to have to be substantially compliant with what they're asking. So if that's part of the approval, they will have to do that to make sure it complies or they won't get a final plat done. I think that's a safer route than opening up the DA for the entire project.
Thanks. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Comments for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Jeff, I think I touched on this, I appreciate you kind of being responsive. I had mixed feelings about this request. I guess just, just a feedback for, for your employer. And we're seeing this play out more and more in Meridian and it's enough that I'm, I'm paying a lot more attention to it. Seeing more and more is more tightly dense product. It's typically the furthest away from open space. Those with the larger lots that have big yards are the closest to the open space. I think that's a huge equity issue in our community, one that I'm not expecting to solve tonight. But I have lots of friends who live in your community, you guys have built something that's just awesome. And there's a lot of demand and which is why I see you're coming to get five more lots. I'm sure they will be sold before they're even available. But I just, I think that you guys have an obligation as a leader in our community to demonstrate equity to our citizens and not just put open space close to the people that can afford the large house with the large lot.
See no more questions? The applicant, Councilman Barrett, any questions? You can sit, but don't go far.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
To start some dialogue. This too seems to be a very narrow, narrow request in a big project. I appreciate the applicant's introduction of greater open space in this particular phase. I understand the reasons necessary for the dimensional standards and that the overall project captures the same net residential units. I think Mr. Nary's comments about the final plat having to be substantially compliant, so long as we catch it, obviously planning our staff will to make sure that it hits what the applicant has proposed and committed to, which I entirely trust that they'll do what they said today. So I'm supportive of the application for those reasons as presented. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm supportive as well. Basically agree with Councilman Borton on, on the reasons and it's been allowed and it's not something we see very often just because of that change in the street frontage. Otherwise it'd be just through administrative process and it would be done and we wouldn't even be aware of it. But I do appreciate the applicant listening to the homeowners out there and making some changes and splash pad, I think will be a great addition to that and adding the open space. And I know staff will make sure there is compliance with that. I don't have any doubt. So I appreciate that. And as Councilman Borton pointed out, we just have a narrow, narrow issue here that we are to decide on. And there might be other issues that residents might have, but there's nothing we can, we can deal with tonight. So appreciate the effort that you did do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I think I can support that, but I would love for council to state the two conditions, even if it's not through a DA modification, but I would just like us to state that, you know, we expect them to comply with our updated open space requirements and add these new amenities. Give me some more comfort that that's part, if that could be part of a motion. I too appreciate the addition of the new amenity. I too appreciate the addition of the new amenity. I think that was very strategic on your part. I would just encourage you outside of this application that, you know, communication is really important with your neighbors. And I feel like where we see the densest phases of a project come in toward the end, there can be a lot of opportunity for like miscommunication to happen with neighbors. And I think really just working on that relationship with the neighbors is really, really important for you through a really lengthy project like this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
I did, on the condition thing, just to make it very clear, I already have those conditions or comments in my staff report. So if you don't want to make a specific comment, you can just say per my report and those become conditions. And I think we're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I believe the public hearing is still open, correct?
It is.
Would, would it be okay if the applicant came forward one more time?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick question for you. Given, it's not common for us to have, to have public, the public come forward and talk about other areas of a community that have already been approved. It's not a very common thing that happens. Usually it is about the, the application at hand. So I'm wondering if you might be, you and Toll Brothers might be willing to just take an extra step to reach out to these folks that have concerns and maybe connect them with your, your HOA manager at Toll, which I think is Bill Stanton, or anybody on your team that could provide their contact information for these folks to, to go over with them what happened with Oakwind. Because I think there definitely is a misunderstanding. I did read back through the narrative that was sent to us and it was not identified to the city that it would become area that was rented out. And so the city didn't, at least I had no knowledge of that. And I don't know that council had knowledge of that when that was. It doesn't matter in this, in, in terms of our actual approval, but I think it is important for the community to know. So are you willing to, you or your team willing to at least provide some contact information for somebody to ask, for the neighbors to ask questions?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Perro, absolutely. I think based on the comments we've heard and just the experience we've had, when you do get to the final phase of an, you know, a, a project with nine hundred units and, you know, half of them filled up, there are bound to be miscommunications and confusion with neighbors. So I would say we're in a bit of an unusual situation now, and I think that's part of the problem here. But yes, I think there are avenues we have through listservs and et cetera to, to maybe provide some more clarity that you can't get on a postcard notice. So we, we can do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Bauer, but I know we're kind of deliberating a little bit right now. And I, I want to just thank the council. I appreciate good dialogue tonight. I came into this not being very supportive of this request. And I'm not quite sure if I am there. To me, the, the feedback from, and I'm just going to call them the, the Mike Lewis's of the world. And if you're ever on a busy road, one more car feels like a hundred more cars. And so I'm certainly sympathetic to the feedback that we heard about the impact of traffic, even if it's one car or five cars or 10 cars. It, it feels real when you're in that area. The part that I'm, I'm struggling with is the compelling reason to grant the rezone is just to allow the applicant to add five more lots. And that's a nexus for me that's just hard to overcome in terms of how our community benefits from that. And clearly the added of an amenity, I think, meets the, the residents, but I don't know if I'm just, I'm quite sold there. So I'm more just, it helps me sometimes a little bit to talk out loud. So I appreciate you indulging me a little bit as I kind of wrestle with this particular issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
In that regard, Councilman Cavan, and I'm not advocating for any particular decision, but overall, well, we're not, we're not increasing the amount of lots that they, that they originally proposed in two thousand thirteen. But overall, they've reduced the number of total living units by quite a bit by taking out all those multifamily projects. So we're really putting fewer cars on the road. So that's another way to maybe think about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Every time I've tried to talk on this issue, the last fifteen minutes, you've called on someone else. And, and each time of my fellow council member provided information that I was going to say. And so I, I have nothing more to add to this, to this conversation. And I appreciate, I agree with Councilman Cavan when he said that I really appreciate, he said he really appreciated the discussion. It's really this discussion that makes me proud to be a part of this body because I thought, I thought it was very thoughtful and deliberate, and I'm grateful for the presentation. It was very specific. And I hope that those who are listening can sort of wrap their arms around what were, what, what was discussed. Because at the end of the day, I really do believe that there's going to be a net benefit to this community. Although the overall density, you know, will be the same from its original proposal. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Move that we close the public hearing on H twenty-two zero zero one zero.
Second. If a motion is slightly close to public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
For all of the reasons discussed in the deliberation amongst council and inclusive of those is some consistent transition that this change still provides to the north, the open space in this particular areas almost doubling. And the inclusion of an active amenity, a summertime amenity just further bolster the reasons to support it. So I'm going to make a motion to approve H twenty-two zero zero one zero, the rezone request and at the request of and consent of the applicant to include all of the comments from the staff report of May third that the applicant has acknowledged and agreed to treat those as kind of de facto conditions. They're willing to comply and we'll ensure that the final plat matches all of those with the Phase twelve open space as depicted, inclusive of the splash pad as well.
Second, the motion. I have a motion in a second. Do I have discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
No discussion specifically on the motion, but only attorneys use words like de facto, just for the record. And I've known Councilman Burnt for a long time. And if he really wanted to say something, he would have said it. The mayor did call on you, by the way.
The question has been called. Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye. Aye.
Did I hear wrong?
Hey, I don't know what I said. I'll start over.
I'm an aye, she's an aye.
Okay. Burns and I, Perros and I, my apologies. Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Real quick, five, so we can try to okay, real quick, we'll take a recess for five minutes and we mean, really mean five. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Pinedale subdivision H 2022-0001. Do we need to open this public hearing, Mr. Nary, in order to consider the applicant's requests? Yeah, then we will open this public hearing with abbreviated staff comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, applicant just wants to remand back after hearing the commission's comments, a Mardi and receipt of a revised plat, they just need to be remanded back to P&amp;Z and essentially start the process over again, continue working with P&amp;Z and staff.
Okay. Council, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here this evening?
He is, but I, I do not believe he has anything to say.
If you'd like to add anything to it, otherwise we'll stand on Joe's comments. So is there anyone from the public that would like to provide testimony on the request to remand? And the audience are online? Seeing nothing? Mr. Nary, is the, do we need to close in motion?
Yes, sir, we need to disclose this public hearing and then add motion to remand.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we close the public hearing on H 2022-0001. Second.
A motion in the second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we grant the applicant's request to remand H 2022-0001 back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion in the second to remand H 2022-001 to the Planning and Zoning Commission, is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, straighter.
Aye.
Burn.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is remanded. Next item up is item seven, public hearings for Summertown subdivision H 2022-0005. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, the last application tonight is for Summertown subdivision, it's a preliminary plat and private street application. Private streets are at administrative approval. Site consists of 13.8 acres, zone TNR, traditional neighborhood residential located at 3104 East Venable, which is the southeast corner of Buystick and Venable. It has some history here with the city, which is why you only have a plat before you tonight. It was annexed in 2017 with TNR. There was subsequent CCC and design review in 2019, and then in 2021 to keep it current. It is mixed-use community on the future land use map, and as discussed with multiple projects in this area, it has a weird little bubble at the mid-mile mark, but tonight, we are just discussing the plat. The plat before you consists of 23 residential building lots, nine single-family along the south boundary, and 14 multifamily lots, with three common lots on the noted 13.8 acres of land in the TNR district. There's also a request for private streets in the multifamily portion of the project requiring only administrative approval. The private street request was actually made for addressing purposes and requested by the city, not by the applicant. So we do appreciate the applicant doing that in order for addressing to be easier for life safety. Minimum lot size overall is, I'm sorry, minimum lot size for the single family is 5,100 square feet, and the minimum lot size for the multifamily lots is somewhat irrelevant and 18,900-ish square feet. Again, site was annexed in 2019 with the Summertown annexation with the TNR district, which allows multifamily residential as principally permitted uses, which means they only need administrative approvals once they get annexed. That would be the certificate of zoning compliance and design review. The applicant also included a small single-family component to the overall project in order to comply with TNR zoning district regulations, which require a minimum of two housing types within the project. Because of the inclusion of the single-family lots and desire to place each multifamily building on each lot, a preliminary plat was required, and therefore there's an existing development agreement to subdivide the property prior to release of the first CO. So to be clear, the applicant is submitting the preliminary plat application to meet the existing conditions of approval and create nine single-family lots along the southern boundary, as well as to subdivide the property overall. The development of the site is already underway and is already outlined in condition via the previous approvals with the existing DA. Many of the previous requirements will be checked for compliance at the time of final plat submission. All of the lots comply with the TNR standards as noted, and the proposed road improvements comply with previous approvals, with the one exception being the street section width of Venable, which was approved differently by ACHD after the original annexation. It's kind of a mess, but in general, everything's good. ACHD has already approved Venable. Access to the approved units is via extension North Venable Lane. A, it's going to be a collector street just adjacent to the property's west boundary. Access to the multifamily portion of the site is via drive-by connection to North Venable in alignment with existing multifamily driver on the west side of Venable for the Crossfield Apartments, as well as two private street connections to the nude local street along the south boundary. The local street is shown as West Wrangler, so the two access points there are here and here. The access point discussed for the multifamily project is in alignment with that access here. Again, ACHD has already approved all of these things. West Wrangler Street is the access for the proposed nine single-family units as well. It is shown to be constructed with a five-foot detached sidewalk and a 33-foot wide street section stepped to the east property boundary, as well as the south property boundary, to connect to an existing step street on the south. Complies to city code and ACHD requirements, and again, was approved with previous applications. The proposed master pathways plan shows a pathway along the east side of the required Venable extension. The submitted plat does not depict this pathway, but despite staff presenting the issue during pre-app meetings, the applicant and I have discussed this as well as during P&amp;Z, that was a major point of discussion as well, that, that should be able to be accommodated within the existing buffer, as well as still meeting the TNR district, zoning district setbacks. There was no written testimony on this, and since the commission hearing as well. Commission did recommend approval as well as staff. The only changes commission made were regarding conditions 8.3 and 11C, which were surrounding the construction of Venable and the multi-use pathway segment. I will stand for any questions at that point.
Thank you, council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Joe, so I understand that from the applicant's narrative that there's 14 multifamily buildings intended, but it says there's been 18 multifamily buildings, clubhouse and pool, building permits already issued. So there's, is there 14 lots in the multifamily area? I just, I'm trying to understand, is there going to be one building on the individual lots? Or do we have some that have no buildings and some that have two buildings? It's hard to tell.
Mr. Mayor, council and pro, I agree, it is hard to tell sometimes with the lot lines. It is 14 multifamily lots, the number of buildings aren't changing, but I do believe there are a couple lots that have more than one multifamily building. So that's where that discrepancy comes in, yes, ma'am.
Council, any additional questions for staff? All right, invite the applicant to come forward.
For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. I was hoping that Councilman Borton was going to be here so that I could be succinct. We've gone through all of the approvals, we are building all the streets, we are actually in the construction. We have a lot of the buildings that are vertical already, so there was little changes that can be made. But we did all of those approvals through the, the DA, the zoning certificates, and the design review. It was the council's decision that we get the plat done before occupancy of the apartments would take place, so that we'd make sure that we built the single family and that those, those components and not just the apartments. So that's why we're here. Realistically, we're talking about the zoning or the subdivision ordinance, and did I put the line in the right place, and do you want me to move a line? We've made the accommodations that we could. Some of the recommendations initially, you know, talked about moving buildings, I couldn't move buildings because they're under construction, but I could make a 10-foot sidewalk on Venable. And the P&amp;Z has made the recommendations for the things that we would like to see take place, and I stand for your approval of a preliminary plat.
Thank you, council, any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. It's correct, maybe everyone wants to send to write testimony to this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, see nobody in the room, we do have two people online. If there's anybody who'd like to write testimony to this item, please use the raise your hand feature. See no one raising their hand, applicant wave their final comments. Council, turn this over to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Check something with staff real quick. Just want to make sure, it sounds like the applicant agrees to build the multi-use pathway segment. If we approve as-is, we should, that is a condition, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2022-0005 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date.
I have a motion in the second to approve item H 2022-0005, is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, straighter.
Aye.
Burn.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, the item is agreed to. Thanks, Kent. Council, any other future meeting topics? Or a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.